All right, I'm gonna ask everybody, we're ready, I'm gonna ask everybody to make their way. We'll start in one minute. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order if my friends behind me. Don't make me gavel. Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:08 PM and ask our city clerk to conduct the roll call, please.
Mayor Source.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Lettigou. Mathias.
Here.
Present.
Paul Maris.
Present.
I will note for the record Vice Mayor is absent.
All right, thank you. That's gonna bring us to item three, which is our pledge of allegiance. If everyone could please stand again and join council for the pledge one more time. All right. Thank you all. So prior to our flood and wastewater meeting, we did have a closed session, and I'll ask our city attorney if we have a report out from closed session. And I believe actually our city manager might have a report out first. Or would you wanna do both report outs?
Well, I'll do the first one and he can do the second one.
Perfect, that sounds great.
We'll split the duties. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council did meet in closed session with regard to item A, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6. The agency designated representatives being the human resources director and the city manager, the employee organization being the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBEW, Local 1245. The council provided direction to its negotiators, and at this time there was no further action to report.
All right, thank you, and I'll turn it over to the city manager for the second item.
Thank you, and regarding the other closed session item, the city council voted to convene in closed session this evening to discuss this matter. The votes for that were, the eyes were councilmember Mathias, councilmember Gordon, Mayor Source, councilmember Mathulik, and councilmember Lettigou. Councilmembers Paul Maris and Brigenza were absent. In addition, the city council provided direction in closed session on that matter. The city council directed that the city manager create an RFP, that it solicit proposals from legal firms that do not have any conflict with the city to provide legal services, and the city managers to recommend five firms for the city council to consider selecting to perform the scope that had previously been identified for the Rennie Public Law Group. That includes looking into the allegations of the raised in the ACLU letter, providing a recommendation of whether or not those allegations need to be, should be investigated, and providing some support to city staff and providing a public response to those allegations. Want to report that the Rennie Public Law Group is not able to support the city and perform that work, and so we'll be looking for another form to do that. And that's the report.
Thank you very much. That's gonna bring us to item six. We don't have any presentations and commendations this evening, so we're gonna move to our consent calendar. We'll open up our public comment for consent calendar items. Any members of the public wishing to address the council on anything on our consent calendar can sign up at the kiosk in the back or raise your hand virtually online. And do any of my colleagues have any items that they wish to pull from consent this evening? Oh, all right, seeing none, let's go ahead and call our speaker.
Yes, we do have one speaker signing up right now, John Lewis, for consent. And if you could please state which item you're speaking to.
So this is a special meeting, so there isn't a general public comment. I don't know off the top of my head if there's an action item that that would fit under, but this is just for the consent calendar at the moment. Thank you. All right, so we've got about a minute left on the clock. Do we have any other speakers? Anybody online?
No one online at this time.
All right, so we've gotta wait this out, and then we'll go ahead and get a motion to approve the agenda and consent calendar. All right. Presuming we don't have any other speakers, why don't we go ahead and get a motion to approve our agenda and consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar and approval of agenda.
All right, and we can go ahead and vote.
Let me redo that. I'm missing a vote.
All right, we're gonna revote.
Okay. I think I'm missing one vote.
And it's not the Vice Mayor's.
Correct. Motion carries unanimously with Vice Mayor absent.
Wonderful, thank you. That is gonna bring us to our action calendar, which is item eight, and I'll ask our city clerk to please announce item eight A.
Item eight A is appointments to various city boards and commissions, and you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight boards or commissions tonight you will be making appointments to.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and open up the comment clock on this item. Again, you can sign up at the kiosk in the back or online. And my proposal, actually, let's see if we, do we have any commenters at this time?
No speakers at this time.
Okay. So I'll give you all my proposal, which is that there are four commissions on the list in which the number of applicants was equal or fewer than the number of slots available, and those were the Architectural Heritage and Landmarks Commission, Beautification Commission, the McCune Commission, and the Participatory Budgeting Steering Committee. McCune, I only have one applicant that I'm showing on my list.
I revised the list this afternoon. There are actually two for McHalen.
We have two for one vacancy, so take McCune off of the list I just said. I've got three, Architectural Heritage, Beautification, and PB. I don't know that we need to do a voice vote on those unless anyone has objections. We'll just go ahead and appoint those members. And then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go alphabetically down the list and do as we did last time, where I'll start with a liaison to that commission, and you all can say anything you wanna say, and then nominate your nominations, and then we'll go down the line like we did last time. So I'm gonna check again, make sure we don't have any commenters.
And no speakers at this time.
All right, why don't we proceed? All right. Architectural Heritage and Landmarks Commission, congratulations, Bralio Soto. And Beautification Commission, congratulations to Avanel Hanley Mills and Erin McGary. For the Commission on Culture and the Arts, we have three applicants, and I believe councilmember Mathias, you're the liaison. Do you wanna start with your nominations? Or nominations, sorry, one vacancy.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Ms. Monique Schaefer for the vacancy.
Okay. And do you want us to go down the line? Who joined councilmember, was it you, councilmember, oh, councilmember Mathulik?
Yes.
You can go next.
Yes, my vote is for Monique Schaefer.
All right. Do we wanna go down the rest of the line?
You want me to call the names, or you just want?
What did we do last time?
I think you did the liaison, then the two-member applicant that was with them, and then we just went.
We'll just go, we'll go down, so councilmember Paul Maris.
Mr. Smith Botha.
Okay. And councilmember Gordon?
Monique Schaefer.
Okay, and I'm gonna go Schaefer and councilmember Lettigou.
Same.
All right.
So it looks like Monique Schaefer is the appointment.
Five to one. Congratulations. And thank you to all of our applicants. That is gonna bring us to the Housing and Community Development Commission. Thank you for the visual, this is very helpful. We had seven applicants for three vacancies, some really excellent applicants, and I'll turn it over to councilmember Lettigou, who's the liaison for that commission.
So I'll nominate Jared Bundy, Nicholas Cassidy, and Ms. Linda Daniels.
All right, and councilmember Paul Maris, you were in those interviews.
I was. I just wanna preface that there were a lot of really good candidates, and it was very, very difficult. So that's, I'm going with Mr. Bundy, Ms. Maderas, and Ms. Smith.
And? I watched a video, and I can see why you're conflicted. I'm going with Ms. Daniels, Ebony Smith, and Jerry Bundy.
All right, councilmember Mathias, you wanna go back that way?
Echoing councilmember Lettigou, Bundy, Cassidy, and Daniels.
All right, councilmember Mathulik?
Bundy, Cassidy, and Daniels.
And I will go Bundy, Daniels, and Maderas. So I believe it's Bundy, Cassidy, and Daniels. Congratulations, and thank you to all of our applicants. All right, that's gonna bring us to the Human Relations Commission. We have four vacancies, and we had six applicants, and is this you, councilmember Mathulik? All right, go ahead.
Yes, and I'd like to also preface this that from all six interviews, and councilmember Mathias can kinda attest to this, that they were all great interviews, and if we could hire or appoint all six of them, we would, but the fact we were only able to appoint four, the four I would appoint are Courtney Davis, Brandon Green, Jarrell Maderas, and Demetra Stahl Nash.
All right, thank you. And? Who was your buddy? Councilmember Mathias. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Like my colleague, I will also go with Ms. Davis, Mr. Green, Maderas, and Ms. Stahl Nash, sorry.
All right, councilmember Paul Maris.
Ms. Davis, Mr. Green, Ms. Maderas, and Ms. Stahl Nash.
Councilmember Gordon?
Courtney Davis, Ms. Douglas, Maderas, and Nash.
All right, councilmember Mathulik? Nope, you already went. I will do, I'll go with Davis, Green, Maderas, and Stahl Nash. That is everybody. Oh, councilmember, no, you already, oh my gosh, you just did HT, sorry, you just did HCD, I got confused. Councilmember Lettigou?
I'm the same as the mayor, thank you.
Right, congratulations, and thank you to our applicants. All right, are we good? And then she read him, she read him off. So we're appointing Davis, Green, Maderas, and Stahl Nash. Correct. All right. That is going to bring us to McCune Commission. We now have two applicants for one vacancy, so I will turn it over to councilmember Paul Maris, who's the liaison.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just preface also that both are really great candidates, and whoever doesn't get it, I hope they, I encourage them to reapply, but I'm gonna go with Mr. Kent.
And councilmember Lettigou, you were in those interviews too.
The same.
Okay. And we'll go, I will defer to the expertise of my colleagues, I'll go for Mr. Kent as well. Councilmember Mathulik, we'll go this way so we don't put the same people on the spot.
Yes, Kent?
All right. And councilmember Gordon?
Kent.
And councilmember Mathias?
Kent.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Kent, and thank you to our applicants for that. We are, are we all right? All right. So that's gonna bring us to participatory budgeting. We have 11 vacancies, so congratulations to Patricia Baisden and Dawn Jordan as primary and secondary from African-American Alliance, Jessica Lozano, Paul Perry, and Ebony Smith.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I just wanna say, the interviews were so amazing, I was inspired by all of you. I am so happy that I didn't have to make this hard decision. I'm just telling you, every last one of them motivated us, and to serve an opportunity to be on this PB and to hear in the history to why they joined, I wanna say thank you to them all.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, and congratulations.
Mayor, may I clarify, you are making these appointments as members, not alternates, correct?
Yes, unless someone has an objection, I would presume we're making them as members. Yeah, all members.
Thank you.
All right, that's gonna bring us to Planning Commission. We had four applications for two vacancies. I'll turn it over to councilmember Mathulik.
Thank you again, Mayor, and once again, had four great applicants, and similar to councilmember Paul Maris', for those that do not get appointed, your voice and passion to the love of Leo, I recommend that you apply for other positions that may be open for any, any one of the other commissions or board. But with that said, the two that I have, would like to appoint are Blind and White.
All right, and councilmember Mathias, you were in those interviews as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was, that was a great conversation that I got to like participate in, and I wanna thank councilmember Mathulik for shepherding that, and the rest of the city staff team. My nominations will be for Abu Samra and Blind.
All right, thank you, and why don't we come this way? So we'll go to councilmember Paul Maris.
Mr. Blind and Mr. White.
Councilmember Gordon?
Same as councilmember Mathulik, I mean, uh, Mathias. I don't wanna disrespect her per name.
Abu Samra?
Abusara, and Eric.
And Blind, okay. And I will go for Mr. Blind and Mr. White. And councilmember Lettigou?
Abu Samra and Mr. White.
All right, so it looks like we are appointing Chris White and? No.
You have a tie?
We have a tie.
Yeah.
I don't think we do.
No?
You, mine aren't on there.
Mine were Blind and White. Here's for Blind and White, okay.
Yeah, so we'll do Blind and White, it looks like. Although, I'm off, I think Mathias is off. I think Mathias should be white instead of, nope, Mathias is.
No. I have Mathias, Lettigou, and Gordon with, I can't even pronounce the names, the very first applicant.
Yep.
So I think you do have a tie. For White, I have Mathulik, Paul Maris, and so.
And Lettigou.
Oh, and Lettigou, okay.
So there's five for Blind, four for White, and three for Abu Samra. White and Blind.
White and Blind, yes. Mayor Source, can we go back to beautification appointments?
Yes.
You have two different terms. You have one expiring 6/30/27, and one expiring 6/30/29.
You know what? So this is councilmember Gordon's, unless she, if she has a preference, we could do that, or we could flip a coin.
I would like to do that. Can you please explain to me your confusion? So I, clarity?
So when you're making the appointments, their terms don't expire at the same time. One term expires June 30th of 2027, and the other expires June 30th of 2029. So you have to decide which, which one you're appointing gets which term, date expiring, if I'm making sense.
Thank you for that, cuz it's not on our documentation, so thank you for clarifying. So for Patricia, Patricia and Dawn, they are one of the two, correct?
No, for beautification. We're on beautification.
So it's Avanel Hanley Mills and Erin McGary.
I see what you're saying.
These were the ones, we interviewed both of them, I think, in the very first round back in April.
I see what you're saying. So I would like to give Avanel the vote for the 29.
Okay.
And Erin McGary, the 27.
Great. Any objections to that on the council? All right, let's do that. Anything else you need from us?
Yes, you need to make a motion to adopt the resolution making all those appointments.
All those appointments, all right, I will turn it over to our acting vice mayor.
Do I need to go commission, by commission board by name, or do I, can I, what is the most efficient way to go about this?
Well, you can say adopt a resolution making all the appointments. We have the list, I'm happy to read it off to you again if you want.
So I move we adopt all the appointees for all the commissions and boards?
You're actually moving the resolution to do that, sorry?
I'm sorry. I moved that, I moved that we, for the resolution to appoint all the commissions and boards as appointed today.
Now we will vote.
Saying one more vote.
Did everybody vote? Charles voted like six times.
There we go. That motion carries unanimously with Vice Mayor absent.
Thank you, congratulations, and thank you to everyone who applied, we really, really appreciate it. And with that, we will move on to item 8B. I'll ask our city clerk to please announce the item.
Adopt a resolution approving the consultant and professional service agreement with Felton Institute for iHeart program for an amount not to exceed $1,598,675 through June 30th, 2026, and authorizing the city manager to execute same.
All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and open up public comment for this item. Anyone can sign up at the kiosk in the back or by raising your hands online. We have our chief here and our deputy chief. Do we have a presentation on this item?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jason Towel. Chief of Police to my right is Deputy Chief Robert Knight. In the audience, we also have two representatives from Felton, Curtis Penn, who is the executive director, and Rayvon Williamson, our program manager. So we don't have a presentation, so I'm just gonna pull some, some main bullet points out of the staff report. Tonight, we're here to ask the city council to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the consultant and professional service agreement with Felton Institute for the iHeart program for an amount not to exceed 1.6 million for a period of June 30th, 2026 through the next fiscal year. Part of that, that dollar amount of 1.6, I just wanted to just kinda clarify, we had some funding from Measure P, which is roughly 1.5. However, we do have funding from a grant, the Protect2Connect grant, which funds about 327,000, and an additional 97,000 for case management navigation services. So we're gonna apply roughly that 426,000 dollars towards the expenses for iHeart. So iHeart is our alternative response model program, and this program piloted starting last summer into this summer. Part of the goals of the program was to provide various services, which includes field-based programs, mental health services, mobile crisis response, behavioral health services, community engagement, and response to nonviolent calls for service. And most importantly, it is an alternative model to reduce the need for police response. We had brought this topic up to you all several times, so I just wanted to recap the last stats that we shared with you all was from iHeart's statistics, the calls for service. So since April of 2024 to roughly June of this year, iHeart responded to or assisted with 1,800 calls for service. So that included welfare checks, mental health type of events, suicide attempts, family disturbances, trespass, and elderly assistance. Of that 1,800 calls, VPD was only required to participate in about 100 of those calls. So roughly 1,700 calls were handled by iHeart, and they averaged a response time of less than 10 minutes. So this is a phenomenal program that we're hoping that you all will consider adopting for this next fiscal year. And with that, we can answer questions, or there are representatives, like I said again, in the audience that can answer questions you may have.
Thank you very much. So what I'll do, I see the city attorney, you have your light on, was there something you were gonna add, or was that an accident? Just making sure. It is all good, it happens. So I see councilmember Gordon, why don't we do any quick questions from council, then we'll go over to public comment? Councilmember Gordon?
Actually, no, I just have a comment. I just wanna say thank you to iHeart, because myself personally have seen the work that they do. I recently had to call a couple days ago, and the situation was very serious and intense. However, they knew who he was, they brought him food, they brought him water, and they communicated to him, got him in a safe place, and I was just overwhelmed. Not that I'm surprised, because it's the second time I had the opportunity to see that, but I also like the fact that they are involved in the community, from supporting our youth for late-night basketball, to supporting schools, community events, whatever that, they are needed, they're there. And then they also have their own individual opportunities for mental health for our young people. I had an opportunity to participate in the union conference that was for young people, and it was amazing to see that support. But what was important that I saw that they were talking about mental health without talking about mental health. And for our young people, they don't know what that looks like, and I actually got to hear them share a little bit about what they're going through, and so I am very happy that, Chief Towel, that you brought them to our community, and I do wanna support this opportunity to continue. Thank you so much.
Thanks. All right, do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we do. We have two speakers signed up.
All right, let's call them up.
Rayvon Williamson is the first speaker, and after Rayvon will be Curtis Penn.
And Rayvon, if you'd like, you can raise the podium on your lower right, there's a little toggle switch. There you go.
Thank you. Feel a little taller. No, first of all, I just wanna say thank you to this committee, thank you to our public and a lot of members in the audience today for supporting iHeart from the very beginning. One thing I wanna point out and just say about iHeart moving forward is that I intend that we are very much more intentional in terms of how we relay our information, communicate our information. I would like to come before the committee at least once a month, just to, you know, give you guys an idea of how we're progressing, even challenges or things that we're facing, just so you'll be in the know, be informed. And since, I would say, you know, just last month, I've really been active at just getting more CBOs involved, community-based organizations involved, talking to our local pastors, and again, just to improve upon the service that we provide. So again, I just wanna take this time to just to say thank you for this opportunity to serve in this way.
Thank you very much.
Curtis Penn?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Curtis Penn. I am the executive director of Justice Service Division with Felton Institute. I want to extend a heartfelt thanks to Chief Towel and DC Knight, working I want to extend a heartfelt thanks to Chief Todd and DC Knight, working tirelessly to getting this through the trenches. There were times that I were getting text messages and emails and they were just really involved in the entire process and I appreciate that. I want to thank you as well, city attorney, for the calls that we've been on to address some of the challenges, particularly around the scope of work and things of that nature. We are looking forward to this continued relationship and supporting the city of Vallejo and more importantly, the residents of Vallejo, those from marginalized communities. And so again, thank you so much for this opportunity and we look forward to continued participation and collaboration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any speakers online?
No speakers at this time, Mayor.
All right. Any other questions or quick comments from council or are we ready for a vote? Councilmember Mathias.
Thank you, Mayor. So the only comment I have to add, and I think the Measure P Commission also expressed the same to some extent, is around our data collection. So I want to make sure that there is a breakdown on the type of calls that they're sort of responding to and more specifically that we get some visibility into how much, if any, case management is taking place around our unhouse folks. And so if you guys can ensure that whatever reporting is taking place has that breakdown so that we can have both at the Measure P Commission and here at the council level some more informed discussions, that would be helpful. So I don't know if I need to add that as a rider to the approval, but I just want to make sure that we start, you know, breaking those calls down and getting into the nuts and bolts.
So I'll ask the city manager if that, would you like that direction formalized as part of the motion?
Yeah, I think you can either do that through a separate motion or you can include that in the main motion if you would like to make it.
All right. Councilmember Matulik.
And just if I could comment on that real quick, we did take that feedback from the last meeting and I think also there was other requests for juvenile data as well. So we're going to be tracking not only the unsheltered encounters, but also juvenile encounters as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Matulik and then Councilmember Lettichu.
Thank you, Mayor. As a degreed social worker working in the school system, this is the exact type of program that the city needs. And one of the things that I want to make sure that gets underscored here, this is helping our police department more than anything else because it's alleviating those calls that they would normally be taking, these 911 calls, and it's going to iHeart to have the appropriate trained personnel deal with these matters, more towards the mental health aspect. So from a, as a degreed social worker, this is exactly what we in the social work profession are always clamoring for, are these types of programs and the resource and the fact that we're putting our money where our mouth is. This speaks to where our purpose and what our intention is. So I full-fledged support this and look forward to the great progress and support that iHeart has proven itself and expand to be. And I'd also like to point out that they're actually expanding it to help support a lot of the issues that have been happening, or at least some of the issues that have been happening in the school system, when there's conflicts between parents or students to where they've been, they've addressed a couple of situations at schools themselves. So they have been a great support, not only to the city, but to the school district also.
Right. Councilmember Lettichu.
Thanks. So as it relates to Councilmember Mathias's request for this data, these metrics, how often are we going to get those metrics?
Currently, iHeart is doing a 90-day report, so we can keep with that cadence about every three months.
And so are we going to do an actual official presentation to the Measure P that gets to the council?
And I think that could be at your direction. There is coming online a public safety committee that it might be a good forum to have those reports there or however you guys would like that presented back to the public.
Sure, I'm fine with that since you are going to be the secretary. So that would be just wonderful and fine. I think just to Councilmember Mathias's point, it is very important that as a city, we are spending dollars and we should understand what is the impact of those dollars spent and that there is a regular way to have a cadence to report out in an official manner. So I appreciate that. So I would ask that when Councilmember Mathias makes the motion or if it's going to be our acting vice mayor, that we would include the cadence and where it's actually going to be reported out. Thank you.
All right. Are we ready for that motion?
And just for clarification purposes, because I know Mr. Williamson talked about reporting monthly and I know that the chief reports out monthly, did we want a tandem it, but with the cadence of the 90 day, or, it looks like I'm going to defer to city attorney Neb for this motion.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if you look at the scope of work under paragraph Roman numeral 14, statistical reporting, the scope of work for the contract already provides for a monthly program manager report to the VPD program coordinator with a summary of calls. The report will include if the activity was VPD or VP divert, which essentially means iHeart handling instead of VPD or fire department personnel, or if it was a joint response, the amount of time on the call, the disposition of the call, the transport pickup location, the patient problem, that would have to be anonymous, of course, the time, the estimated age of the client, the gender of the client, race, ethnicity of the client, language spoken, destination of transport, any pertinent history, treatment, and all the criteria established by the VPD program coordinator. So anything that the program coordinator adds to the requirement of the report will be done monthly. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean it comes monthly to the council, but it could from the program coordinator in a report or a combination of the program coordinator and the consultant program manager could bring that forward. But the reporting on a monthly basis is bound into the contract. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that.
And it sounds like Councilmember Mathias wanted to add a couple of layers to that, specifically for the unsheltered and juvenile to be added to that report. So if that needs to be specified in the motion, I can...
Well, it already says the nature of the call and the estimated age of the client. So that would cover both of those, I believe.
Okay, so I can just read the motion as is in...
That's up to Councilmember Mathias if he's happy with that reporting.
I just want to make sure that that reporting's coming into the public safety committee because right now it's going into a staff member and PD. So if the acting vice mayor can include that. Thank you.
All right. Are we comfortable, you want to go ahead and make that motion then? Thank you.
I move we adopt a resolution approving the consultant and professional services agreement with Felton Institute for the iHeart program for an amount not to exceed $1,598,675 through June 30th, 2026 and authorizing the city manager to execute the same with the report going to the public safety committee.
All right, I think we're ready to vote.
Motion carries unanimously with Vice Mayor absent.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Great. That is going to bring us to item 8C and I'll ask our city clerk to please announce this item.
Provide notice of intent to amend fiscal year 2526 budget in the amount of $642,860.94 of opioid litigation fund revenue to support the Broadway project.
All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and open up public comment for this item in person and online. And it looks like we have our assistant to the city manager, Natalie Peterson here. Do we have a presentation on this item? All right, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Natalie Peterson, Assistant to the City Manager. Next slide, please. So as a reminder for the public, the Broadway project is a 47 permanent supportive housing units. They are studio units located at 2441 Broadway. They are being built in partnership with the developer firm Foundation Community Housing and the operator Shelter, Inc. Firm Foundation currently owns the property through construction completion, at which time the city has the option to, exercise their option to purchase the property. Next slide, please. So on June 3rd, staff came before city council and provided notice of intent to amend the fiscal year 2425 budget for the amount of $642,860.94 with the funds to not be allocated towards the developers fee at the request of council. Unfortunately, due to timing with creating the agreements, we were not able to get back to council before the fiscal year 2425 budget closed. So we are back this evening before you to restart step one of the two-step process, which is providing notice of intent for the fiscal year 2526 budget for that same dollar amount. The funds will be used for the same criteria previously brought before council. So it's really just an administrative fix to move this into the current fiscal year. Next slide, please. So the big kind of buckets for funding breakdown are on the screen in front of you. I'm not going to read through all of the numbers, but they do, when we were doing some quick math with some of the current purchases, the dollar amount is $642,770.94 being requested. That includes furniture, which can be inclusive of window coverings for the units, common room equipment, purchase of the laundry or repayment for the fronting of the money for the laundry machines out of the construction budget, TVs for the common areas, and then welcome kits for the participants that are coming in, so things like pots, pans, things to make their units useful as they come in. This includes the equipment materials and any installation that comes with it. For technology, the two mainline items for that would include security cameras and the telephone lines for up to six months until it switches over to VIP fiber for the emergency lines that run the 911 system as well as the elevators. The operational startup services include the three months of 24-hour security that is part of the SEQA lawsuit requirements, the insurance requirements, and upstaffing for Shelter, Inc. during the lease-up process to have additional staff there helping process and move people in as quickly as possible. The construction gap covers some remaining items that were not covered by other funding sources, so just shy of $72,000 to finish any remaining construction. And the operational costs of up to 90 days or until the project-based voucher funding is received, is released from HUD and can start funding the operations. So as a reminder, the National Opioid Settlement Agreement funding covers, these are some of the main high-impact areas of abatement. We believe that it addresses three and four for this funding project. Staff did reach out to the Department of Healthcare Services and shared our overview of the Broadway project and the proposed use of the funds. And DHCS did confirm that the project appears to meet the criteria for the use of funds, particularly in alignment with number three, which is addressing the needs of communities of color and vulnerable populations, including sheltered and unsheltered homeless populations that are disproportionately impacted by substance use disorders. Next slide, please. So on July 23rd and July 24th, Make It Home in Wells Fargo sponsored a build-out day where community members from the city of Vallejo, Firm Foundation, Shelter, Inc., city staff, and Healthy Vallejo came together to build out the furniture in the rooms. It was a really great moment in getting to see the building that came as unfurnished shelves, equipment and things being brought in, and then the furnishings coming in, really helping turn this from units into really homey feel. So it was really a great opportunity to be a part of. And we just wanted to take a moment to recognize and thank Wells Fargo and Make It Home for providing the donations for that and all of the various organizations and individuals who came together to help build the equipment. Healthy Vallejo came out in a strong force and took what we thought was going to be a full two days and made it like a day and a couple hours the next morning. So very appreciative of their support and their team coming in to help with that. Next slide. So a update, when we came to council on July 22nd, we had told you that we were hoping to move individuals in beginning August 18th with having to restart the two-step process. We do have to potentially move some of those dates back. So tonight is notice of intent to amend is before you. Step two will be coming to you guys at your next council meeting, which is currently September 9th, for the amending of the fiscal year budget. Assuming that council approves that amendment, we can execute the agreements and begin move-ins shortly after September 9th, with the ribbon cutting still occurring in October like previously presented. Next slide. So the recommendation before you this evening is to provide the notice of intent to amend the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget in the amount on the screen for the opioid litigation fund revenues to support the Broadway project, the same item that came before you guys in June, just with the updated fiscal year budget. Shelter, Inc. and Firm Foundation are both actively looking for other donated sources for some of the equipment and services or things that will be furnishing the units. So there is a chance that not all of the funds will have to be expended. If that is the case, these funds would come back to council into the larger opioid funding bucket for potential future council allocations. With that, I am happy to hand it over to council and address any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Why don't we take our public commenters on this item and then we'll go to council questions? Do we have any in person?
Yes, we do. We have William Baker.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is William Baker. Last night, just after 7:00 PM, you received an email from me stating that item 8C before you tonight could not be considered because the referenced documents in the staff report were not made available to the public. The city manager confirmed that the missing documents would be made available, but unfortunately, the notice period had passed and the item again needs to be rescheduled. I am personally very, very confused on how things are processed here because we just saw on a screen some funding requests per budget. The staff report said very specifically two different items that would be included as attachments were not, but we're sitting here this evening asking for approval of this first of two steps. I've prepared other things here, but the presentation just made was, is actually very, very confusing to me because I felt that the public should be made aware and should have a chance to look at information before it is considered by the council. So the public has the opportunity to speak to what is being proposed. There are no numbers available until this afternoon at 5:00, when I looked again at the city website for meeting notices. So I really don't have a whole bunch more to say other than what was sent to you last night and also this morning. I also want to reiterate, last week, I believe it was Tuesday, I sent an email that is this one from Cannon Construction Company, who back in April 22nd stated specifically that there's no more money available to pay for construction. And the money that is available, the $1.5 million is available after the construction is completely finished. That's $1 million from the county in the ARPA home, ARPA funds, and also there's about $500-plus thousand out of HCD. Both of those pools of money are only available after the building is completely finished. In particular, HCD is very, very particular on what many, 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 many things that had to be completed before their funds are released. So I will stop there, but those are my thoughts and objections to what's going on this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers in person?
No other speaker signed up.
All right. How about online, Manny?
None online, Mayor.
All right. So with that, we'll move to questions from council and I see Councilmember Gordon.
Excuse me, can you please explain to us either city manager or city attorney what the commenter is stating?
So the member of the public who made comments, if I may summarize them, there were two different main points. One is that the staff report for this item made reference to two attachments that were inadvertently not included in the packet. Those were distributed today as supplemental materials, which is our normal process for adding those. Note that this item that's before city council tonight is a due... Note that this item that's before city council tonight is a duplicate of an item that city council already heard and approved. We're bringing it back because the item that was originally approved was appropriating funds out of last year's budget, last fiscal year's budget, and we didn't get through the full two-step process for that. So, we're starting that process over again. So, there's, the information that was inadvertently omitted from the packet had already been presented to the city council, when the item was presented back in June, I believe. The other comments relate to the cash flow, I think, and the timing of some of the expenditures. I think that Ms. Peterson addressed those, the timing of the completion of the construction, the budget and financing for the project, the last time that she provided a monthly update on the project. And Ms. Peterson, if you'd like to add anything else, please do so.
Yes. So, the county ARPA funding, they did have a portion of funding that was set aside until we received temporary certificate of occupancy. We have submitted that request back when we got TCO to the county for the, the release of the funds. So, we do have those. The IIG funding, which is one from HCD, there is a partial contingency that is, we can submit for after we receive TCO. There is a stringent list of checklist items that we have to complete. We are in the process of filling that out to submit to HCD. It does not mean that the work cannot be done previously and reimbursed on a look-back basis. So, the funds will be available once we submit that final checklist of documentation that they're looking for.
Thank you so much. I do recall that. I'm just only reiterating it because of the fact that it was brought up and I wanted some clarity. So, this was just only a repeat, as you might have heard her say, that expired. So, I, that's the only reason why I wanted to be clarified. Thank you.
Councilmember Lettis, you.
Thank you. Could you please clarify, what are the requirements to use opioid, opioid dollars? So, what are, what are the bases? What is the policy to use those dollars?
So, the funding, the, the main intent of the funding is to address the opioid issues throughout, throughout the nation. The funding comes down to the counties and to cities specifically, who decide, who said yes, that they want to receive the funding. 50% of the funding has to be used towards high-impact abatement activities, the HIAA, which is the fifth slide in your packet. So, it has to touch one of those for 50% of the funding. We believe in conversations with the Department of Healthcare Services that the Broadway project and the percentage of individuals who may be going into this project to have opioid dependency issues would be equal to the amount of funding being put in or less than for the funding to address both items three and four on that list, which is the addressing the needs of the community of colored and vulnerable populations.
Excuse me, one moment.
Yes.
So, can we pull, pull up that slide?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Manny. So, we believe that it references number three and number four. So, then number four with the diversion with substance use disorders from the justice system into treatment, including by providing training and resources to first and early responders, and implementing best practices for outreach, diversion and deflection, employability, restorative justice, and harm reduction. So, by being a housing-first model, meeting people where they're at and bringing them in and then getting them into treatment, and offering the services for employment services, we believe meets both items three and four for this funding.
So, where did we get that data to support this decision?
For how many individuals we believe may come in? Based on the point and time count, 23% of individuals experiencing homelessness in the county have reported substance use disorders. So, based on City of Vallejo's population of unhoused individuals, we believe that one of, minimum, one of the individuals going into the Broadway project will meet that criteria.
So, when we're collecting data, are we going to collect this data as individuals come in to the Broadway project?
Yes. It will be collected as part of their HMIS intake and as part of their intake into the project for services through Shelter Inc.
Okay. And so, how will we, we report that data out without identifying, without PII identification, meaning we're personally identifying someone? How will we bring that information forward?
So, typically, what we do is we give individuals unique identification numbers. So, staff who have access to personal information can go back and confirm that, but when we present it, an individual would have a unique identification number that we can present forward with these stats.
And how often are we going to bring that information to this council?
I believe that council and the Housing Commission have asked for quarterly reporting on the Broadway project and the Navigation Center, so we would include it during those quarterly reports.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Mathias.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I want to first start with the housekeeping question for you. So, we voted to not appropriate any additional funds to the Firm Foundation around the impact fees or some development piece, fees that they were attempting to get, collect from the city. So, I just want to confirm that that direction we gave still holds. We're not paying those fees because that's what we said we weren't going to do.
That is correct. We can add it as part of tonight's motion if you would like to include it there again, but in the agreements that we have, that we have drafted, there is that exclusion for the funding in the agreement with Shelter Inc. Or, sorry, with Firm Foundation to not, to have the funds not go towards their developer fees.
Yes. I just want to make sure that that's accounted for. And then two, obviously, we, we missed a step, you know, in appropriating the funds as part of last year's budget. Now, there's a three-week delay. Because I think you, you said, the last time we met on this, that there were 30 folks that were document-ready and would start sort of phasing into this project. So, can you just quickly speak to what resources on an interim basis are being provided to these 30 folks that are document-ready, that were perhaps expecting to move in on the 18th? And because we missed that step, now they have to hold or wait, you know, an additional couple of weeks?
Yes. So, the services that they're currently able to access will stay with them until they move into the project. We can stay, we will stay in communication with them and update them on the updated timelines and any potential delays. We do let individuals know that as they're going through the background process and different things, that August 18th was an ideal date to, for the first round of move-ins, but it was not a guaranteed date for any particular individual, based on how long it takes to get background checks, or if they do have additional documentation or income verification that needs to happen during this process.
Okay. All right. That's all I got for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Paul Mares.
Thank you for your presentation. I actually just really want to talk about the opioid funding. Hopefully, I could not cross the line, but a few questions. The funds you mentioned, please confirm with me, does it stay with the health and social services or is it with Capsolage JPA?
These funds are directly to the City of Vallejo, so...
I mean, from, from, sorry.
So, they're from settlements with different opioid producers or places like Wal-Mart, Walgreens who sold them.
Right.
So, the funding then goes to the counties and to the cities specifically. But it is out of the Department of Healthcare Services for the state that oversees that.
Okay. So, when we apply for it, we apply it to the county?
We do not apply. We, when these funds came forward, said yes, we would like to receive them as a city. So, as settlements are getting paid out and as future settlements go through the court process and dollars are associated to it, those come as direct allocations to the city. So, there's no additional requests we have to do moving forward. We just get those funds and we'll bring updates to council as we get additional funds as future settlements close out.
Okay. And then past the Broadway project, before this, have we used these funds for any other programs? Or have any other CBOs that you know have used these funds?
So, we brought an item back, I believe, end of May to allocate funding for operations and some additional security-related items for the Navigation Center. So, those are moving forward. We also allocated funding to cover, I believe it was a month or two, of iHeart's contract in between, when their funding was running out and tonight's agreement coming before you guys.
Okay. And then past this, can you imagine possibly using these funds for other purposes besides sheltering and housed? And that's an important issue, but also to improve our community with respect to those who are affected by opioids or who are impacted by opioids? Because I, and I bring this up because it is, it is a huge issue, right? In our city and also in the region. So, I was wondering if we could do more with this funding?
There's lots of other things that we can do. So, the, the main intent is this funding goes towards those impacted by opioid use or substance use disorders. So, other cities have done, for example, going to high schools and giving trainings on how to identify and how to prevent opioid uses with high school students as well as their parents. Some communities have done trainings on how to use Narcan. So, there's, there's a lot of different things that we as a city could, could do. We can partner with other agencies to do that. So, staff who are helping to oversee these funds can look into potential items and bring those to council. But if council has ideas for how they may like to utilize those funds, I think staff would be open to exploring what those are and bringing that back to council at large for a decision.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Matulik.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to give Natalie Flo, Assistant City Manager, Hain, and the rest of the unhoused team, for the yeoman's work they've been doing over the past couple of years. And based on the questions that have been asked tonight, people can see the complexity and how challenging this whole process is. And keeping in mind that we had both the Navigation Center going, this Broadway project going, and even the Blue Oak overlapped a little bit, not to mention the Grants Pass judgment that came down. So, there was a lot of work that needed to happen. And between these, primarily these three individuals, along with the city attorney's office, they were doing yeoman's work over the past couple of years. And so, I want to commend city manager Murray for adding our newest addition to the team as assistant manager, Conley, to help support this, because you can see that the bandwidth that it takes to get a lot of this done. And I'm hoping, and I'm looking forward to the future of our unhoused situation of moving this forward and moving our unhoused resources, because it goes beyond just a roof over someone's head. It has to be a sustainable services and programs to help the unhoused, to have and, to live individual and independent lives. So, this is where we as a city are putting our, our best foot forward and adding assistant city manager Hain, or assistant city manager Conley to the team now. I think that bodes well to, to what is looking forward to our unhoused situation now. So, thank you for that.
All right. Thanks. I have a quick comment. We've already done one pass of the dais. I do see you, Councilmember Gordon. I would ask you, keep it brief. I don't want to do a whole second pass. I'm hoping we can move to a vote, but if you want to go ahead, if you have a brief, brief comment, I, I can. I would say, I was, so I voted against this the first time. I wasn't comfortable with it. I'm still not comfortable with it. I think, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the stretch of the opioid litigation. We're going off of 40% of our unhoused have substance abuse issues. We don't know if it's opioid and 50% has to go to high abatement. And we're spending some of it on construction and materials. And I'm looking at the criteria and seeing that unallowable uses include developing infrastructure, investing in equipment not directly related to prevention, treatment, harm reduction, recovery services. I understand that we've been in touch with folks. I just, I'm still not comfortable with it. I think we've had enough issues and controversy with this project and I, I want us to be able to move forward and move past it and get it open. But for me, I'm not comfortable voting for the opioid litigation funds. So, with that, I'll move over, back over to Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you so much. I do want to ask for more of a clarity, a clarity question, excuse me, clarifying question. The individuals who are coming in, what does that process look like? And is it like, okay, I'm going to show up August 19th, then, well, originally, and I'm going to get in? What does that process look like and what is the qualification for that opportunity to move in? If this is not the right place to answer that, I understand, but if it could be answered, I appreciate it. Because something just recently happened and an unhoused person actually thought that she can be able to go on August 19th. You know, I called and you spoke to her personally. And she actually thought that she could be able to go in. Could you please explain for the purpose of the community to have more clarification of what that looked like?
And that might be a conversation to have separately, because this item is focused on the opioid funding. I don't know if there's anything we can provide, but I would encourage a follow-up after, I think.
Yeah. Through the mayor, I just, for, I think transparency for the community, so there aren't additional questions, I can have a much more detailed conversation with individual council members. But individuals who are interested in potentially being referred to the process should call 211, 24/7 to do a coordinated entry intake. The information in terms of if you have a referral or if you're moving forward in the process would need to come from Resource Connect Solano and/or Shelter Inc. as the operators. So, I know there's a lot of people in the community who are being told you can go there by various different organizations. So, the, the two main sources to hear that information from will be Resource Connect Solano or Shelter Inc. But I'm happy to have more detailed conversations with council members individually.
Thank you.
Thanks. And we'll be due by the time our next meeting, we'll be due for another monthly update, so we can expand, expand on that if needed. And I see Councilmember Lettis, you again, I'll just ask that you keep it brief.
Thank you. So, to our city manager, if the opioid dollars are not approved, where are you going to get the funding from?
I don't think that we have identified a backup source at this time, particularly given the fact that the council had previously approved funding for this as part of step one at the same time and it's the same proposal. I suppose that if the opioid funding was not approved, we would need to go back and identify alternate sources.
Okay. Thank you. And then in addition to this council and to all of us from a very bureaucratic perspective, we committed to open up this facility on the 19th of August, correct? Or what date was it?
We were targeting beginning move-ins the week of August 18th.
And so, now, because we are in this two-step process, we're now, as a council, saying we are going to delay almost a whole nother four weeks before anyone can be sheltered. So, to my colleagues, I challenge us to really think about that. Because just to Councilmember Mathias' point, what services for however many beds we have for those individuals, what services are we providing in the meantime? I don't know.
Yeah. So, if individuals are eligible for the Navigation Center, they can go, and they have referrals, they can utilize that until the housing becomes available. That would not take them out of qualification.
So, when you say referrals, where?
Referrals to the Navigation Center. They could do that. They could take advantage of that prior to going to the Broadway project if they're, if they're eligible and are willing to accept that. Outside of that, we're reliant on other nonprofit organizations to continue providing the, the services that they're providing to the individuals.
So, have we identified those individuals that potentially would be going to the project?
So, Resource Connect Solano, through their referral process, does have 30 individuals who are like at the top of that list to begin that background process. I, we would, I would have to get the, the names directly from them.
There is, if I may, an alternate course that the city council could consider, which is the delay is needing to go through the charter required two-step process. And the fact that we don't have another regular city council meeting, our next council meeting, regular council meeting is scheduled for early September. If the city council would like, and you provide direction through your motion or is an alternate motion, we could pull for a special city council meeting to take place before that with this item, step two of this to take place. And that would, I mean, that's really the only thing that is causing the delay in the move-in date. I think the agreements otherwise are ready to go and be considered by the city council. So, if city council would so desire, you can direct us to try and look for a special council meeting date prior to our next regular meeting date.
So, I'd like to make a motion that this council would consider for our city manager to pull for a special date. I think it's unconscionable that we think it's okay to delay this any further. So, that would be my first recommendation to determine how we can make this happen. Because the fact of the matter is, prior to this, just as the city manager said, we had essentially approved these funds. And it's back before us due to really process, and we really do need to figure out how we're going to move forward quickly to help move 30 individuals off the street from being unhoused. quickly to help move 30 individuals off the street from being unhoused.
All right. We have a motion on the table. I see Councilmember Gordon, again, if you have any clarifying questions, then we got to vote on that motion.
No, I, we have the city council. We don't really have to do two-step. We can make that a motion and make this an emergency situation due to the fact that we are going to be on recess. We can, can we not do something different through the city attorney?
We have, yeah.
No, the process, the two-step process for a budget amendment is unfortunately bound, well, I don't know about unfortunately, is part of the charter. So it isn't something that we can just ignore. But there isn't a specific number of days between. So we can certainly, as was suggested, if a, if a, if a special meeting can be stacked up, that the council can attend. I'm sorry?
It needs to be 24-hour posting.
So a special meeting requires at least 24 hours of posting. We would be bringing forward at that time with step two, the council's approval of the two agreements as well. So it would be those three items, it would be one agenda item, three actions to approve the two agreements that go with this, and then step two of the budget process. Council can poll yourselves right now if you want to, and try to find a date and announce what that date would be. Or the city clerk can poll you later, and we can announce that with a 24-hour notice.
Only because a lot of us are going to be leaving, and we probably wouldn't have time to be able to, you know, follow the protocol to attend via Zoom, if that's the case. If I could ask my colleagues, could we make a poll right now to make ourselves available sometime this week, so that we will not have any delays?
So we do need to vote on the motion, and then we could, I guess we could try to do a straw poll right now. I would, I would suggest that the, whoops, I would suggest that we have the city clerk look at times that the council chambers are available and go, because there's probably a little bit of time that's needed to find particular dates and do that polling. But maybe we can give direction to do that immediately, you know, in the next 24 hours or something like that.
Because I know a lot of meetings have been canceled this week. Yeah.
She's looking at it.
Yeah, she's looking at it now.
Can we do, do we need to vote on that? Or can we schedule?
Yeah. So I think we need a, a vote on the direction to look for a special meeting date.
Do we need to vote on that, or are we just doing it right now?
I think we should, I think you should vote on it. But we can also work real time, if you would like, to try and identify date. And of course, there still needs to be a motion vote on the main item, which is the approval of step one.
Can we just do a voice vote on Councilmember Lettigew's motion right now, so we can clear it? Can I go all, all in favor on her motion to find a, schedule a special meeting? It has to be a roll call vote. All right. Well, let's vote on that, then.
You want to use the machine, or you want me to do a roll?
We can use the machine.
Okay.
This is just to schedule the special meeting.
All right. Okay. The machine's up now. You can vote.
This is just to schedule the special meeting.
Well, it's not working. But the motion, the motion carries unanimously with Vice Mayor absent.
All right. And so while our city clerk looks for dates to suggest, and we can try to come up with something here, why don't we go ahead and get the motion to do the approval? Councilmember, yeah, Councilmember Matulik, would you be willing to make that motion?
Yes. I move that we provide notice of intent to amend the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget in the amount of $642,860.94 of opioid litigation fund revenue to support the Broadway project.
All right. And now we're voting on the actual item, although it went away. Councilmember Matthias?
I just want to offer a friendly amendment to Councilmember Matulik's motion, which is the, I don't want any development fees for the firm foundation.
And I think that's, that's already in the, in the agreement that Natalie mentioned.
It is in the agreement, but I think you can also add it as, as part of the motion, if council so wants.
All right. So we have the vote up again. Let's consider it, voting on the motion with the friendly amendment.
That motion carries with Mayor Source opposed and the Vice Mayor absent. And real quickly, the council chambers is available next Tuesday, the 12th, and the following Tuesday, if you want to stick with Tuesday.
Are four people available on the 12th?
Just, just Tuesday, there's a lot happening.
Next Tuesday, the 12th?
Remember, you, you scheduled me.
I don't know. Are four of us available? Paul Mares, Matulik, I'm, I can be available.
I'm not available, but you guys can meet.
Yeah. We just need four people. Why don't we, why don't we wait, and we'll confirm that after?
That's fine. I'll make myself available, no matter what. I'll do it.
So we'll tentatively schedule it for the 12th?
Do you want me to follow up with the Nemo?
Please, because let's just verify that we'll have a quorum.
Okay.
All right. With that, I'm going to move us to the next item. Thank you, Natalie. And that, actually, you're staying up. You can just stay right there, I think, because our next item is our honorary street sign. Is that you?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. And I'll ask the city clerk to please announce item 8D.
Receive requests for honorary street sign designation for a portion of Gateway Drive and request for key to the city. Adopt a resolution approving an honorary street sign designation in honor of Carsten Charles C.C. Sabitha for the portion of Gateway Drive between Sage and Fairgrounds to read "C.C. Sabitha Way Honorary" and approving the issuance of a key to the city.
Okay, C.C. Sabathia. We're getting, our audience members are correcting the pronunciation. All right. So we have Assistant, Executive Assistant to Mayor Eric Zomp here, and again, Natalie Peterson. And for some context for folks, actually, they can provide this context. But we have, we have been working on this request since his induction, or this, this idea, since it was announced that he was getting inducted. And there have been some clunks with just the process that was put in place when E40 got the street sign designation. So one of the things that the city manager and I discussed, actually, that Natalie proposed that we then discussed, was on this agenda, after we vote on these imminent street signs and keys of the city, we're going to go through the policy and recommend some potential changes to the policy to make sure that we have things, you know, as smooth as possible going forward. And with that, I will turn it over to you both. Thank you. And we've opened the public comment period for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Eric Zomp. I am the Executive Assistant to Mayor Andrea Source.
And Natalie Peterson, again, Assistant to the City Manager. Thank you, guys, for having us here this evening. We are very excited to bring forward this request. Manny, if you can go to the next slide for me. Thank you. So the request this evening is for an honorary street sign designation as well as a key to the city. So for some historical context, an honorary street sign designation, there is a council policy that was approved by the city council on July 11th, 2023. The honorary street sign designations are reserved for exemplary service to the city of Vallejo. This method of honoring individuals or groups is reserved for those having a citywide impact of great renown. And the individuals proposed to be honored with an honorary street sign designation must have resided or worked in Vallejo during their lifetime, and must have made significant and long-term contributions through cultural, humanitarian, historic, military, or professional achievements.
Next slide. For the key to the city, the policy is at the discretion of the mayor's office, and then it goes to the council for approval. A key to the city, it's a prestigious award to bestow honor upon distinguished persons or honored guests of the city of Vallejo, and to recognize exceptional contributions or achievements. It should be rare and restricted to instances of exceptional service or contributions. And nominees will be persons who have made significant contributions or who have outstanding achievements. Categories may include, but are not limited to philanthropy, business, arts and culture, volunteering, advocacy, or leadership.
So Carsten Charles Sabathia, known to his family, friends, and fans as C.C. Sabathia, is a Vallejo native. He was a Vallejo Little Leaguer and a graduate of Vallejo High School, being a three-sport athlete. He has a lifetime achievement in Major League Baseball, is the class of 2025 MLB Hall of Fame, is a philanthropist, has the Pitch Inn Foundation, and has achievements in arts and culture through his bestselling memoir, Till the End. If you can't tell, we've got some fans in the audience, who, and I think we are all also clapping on the inside for this. Next slide, please.
So one of the categories for key to the city is philanthropy. And this is something that C.C. Sabathia is very well known for. His philanthropy has a focus on youth. And as he has done well, he's shared the benefits of his success with, with the community. He's never forgotten where he's come from. And he is the largest donor to the Vallejo Teacher's Store, and that is a free store where teachers can go and stock up for their, their school year. He's an annual donor of free backpacks and school supplies to K through third graders at the VCUSD. He's donated thousands of dollars in scholarships to deserving Vallejo students. He's provided free tickets to Vallejo High School students to attend college and professional athletic events. And he holds free baseball camps, providing free equipment and in-person instruction. And he, he himself shows up to the camps. Next slide, please. And with the Pitch Inn Foundation, he's also donated new cheer and athletic uniforms and equipment to Vallejo High School and North Vallejo Little League. During COVID, he donated personal protective equipment to the schools. And he's donated free Thanksgiving turkeys through Contra Costa Salano Food Bank. Next slide. He's also been instrumental in maintaining and upgrading athletic fields. He's donated labor and funding to update Vallejo High School baseball field. He, he had essentially turned the field around with a new sprinkler system, fencing, seating, and a scoreboard. And he did similar upgrades to the North Vallejo Little League, which serves the youth of the Country Club Crest neighborhood.
So he is also very famous and well-known for his athletic endeavors. He, again, was a Vallejo Little Leaguer, where he excelled in North Vallejo as a pitcher. He was the class of 1998 from Vallejo High School, where he played three sports, football, baseball, and basketball. He received scholarships to play football and baseball, but ultimately was drafted right after high school to the minor leagues, and shortly after was pulled up when he was 20 years old to make his major league debut. Next slide. He has played for three teams during his career, Cleveland, Milwaukee, and the New York Yankees, where he eventually retired from. He is a 2003 American League Cy Young Award winner. He led the Yankees to a World Series title. He's the American League Championship Series MVP. He is the 16th all-time list for strikeouts with 3,093 at the time of his retirement. He's the third left-hander to join the 3,000 strikeout club. He is one of only five pitchers with 250 wins, 3,000 strikeouts, and a 6,000, 600 winning percentage. In 20, in his 26 postseason games, he went 10 for 7 with 121 strikeouts and 130 innings. Next slide. So the portion of Gateway Drive that the foundation and the Sabathia family are requesting is from Fairgrounds to Sage Street. That would be inclusive of seven intersections to recognize as C.C. Sabathia Way Honorary. So the recommendation before you tonight is to designate Gateway Drive between Fairgrounds and Sage as C.C. Sabathia Way Honorary, and grant him a key to the city. His lifetime achievement in Major League Baseball, his philanthropy and contribution to arts and the cultures makes him very well-deserving of this recognition from the city of Vallejo. And we believe that all of his achievements meets both the honorary street sign designation criteria and key to the city criteria. With that, I would like to invite Ms. Hazel Wilson up to say a few words on behalf of the organization, before opening it up to public comment, if Mayor is a...
And we're probably going to want to lower the podium for Ms. Hazel. Ms. Hazel, on your, yeah, there it is.
Mayor Source, members of the council, and members of the community, it is my supreme honor to represent Team 52, the C.C. Sabathia Pitching Foundation. C.C. has never forgotten the children of Vallejo. I'm his boots on the ground in Vallejo, along with Coach Wilson and other community members. I, I cannot tell you the things his philo, his philanthropic endeavors. We spoke of the backpacks and the supplies for first and through third grade. But what you miss is, it's done for every school in the Vallejo City Unified School District, and one full school, K through eight. The scholarships. Right now, we're collecting information from scholarship winners over the years, and what it meant to them to get the scholarships, and where they are today. He was a Vallejo High School class of 1998. That was my daughter's class. C.C. has not forgotten where he came from. He didn't say he came from Benicia, or American Canyon, or Napa. He's very proud of the fact, Country Club Crest, Vallejo, California. And he says it with pride, not just lip service. I do a lot of work for children in the community, a lot of volunteer work. But this is the one I'm most proud of. Because when those boxes of backpacks and school supplies come, and we see the joy on the kids' face when we hand them out, when we hand out the turkeys near Thanksgiving, whatever is happening, and wherever he sees a need, he's always, how can we help it? So when Coach Wilson and I are called to serve, it means nothing. We get as many people involved as possible. The teacher's store, we're going to have a drive on Saturday in front of Corbus Field. The teacher's store is a store in the Vallejo City Unified School District, where the teachers get to come and shop for free. That's to ensure that every child in every classroom, they don't have to worry about where the pencils and the paper, and where the notebooks and the markers or whatever comes from. Because the teachers get to come and shop for free. Our biggest donor there is the Sabathia Pitching Foundation. We're hoping to have an event coming up, a community event, in September, where the city will be able to come out, everyone, the community, will be able to come back and honor Vallejo's favorite son, C.C. Carsten Charles Sabathia. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we want to go to public comment?
Yes, we have one more speaker signed up. Ramona Bishop?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I came tonight on other business. I did not realize that there would... I did not realize that there would not be an open, kind of, public comment section on just anything. But recognizing the agenda, I became just an instant fan. And so, I just want to stand to say that I've thrown my full support behind C.C. Sabathia Way. But also, I'm a fan of Confunction as well. And so, I say vote yes on both items, and let's just keep it moving. I'll be back for my other item.
Thank you.
No other speaker signed up.
All right. Do we have any speakers online?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one speaker online.
All right. Let's hear him.
And C., please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Hi. Good evening, council, and good evening to those in community who are recognizing Sabathia. I just want to say how proud and grateful I am about him. And I say that really knowing almost next to nothing about baseball and not being a baseball fan, but you have to acknowledge his athletic achievements. But in addition to that, as the other speakers have pointed out, despite his fame and fortune, he hasn't forgotten where he came from. And he has given back consistently and generously, really outstandingly. And it's something that Vallejo needs so much, both the resources and someone who is a role model that way. And then also, I don't want to belabor this, but he had some demons, some difficulties that he needed to face in his life, and he did so with aplomb. So, you know, we all have difficulties, and it's not how many times you have a difficulty, it's how many times you fight it back. So, all the way around, I am just so proud and finding myself in tears, really, because he's an exemplary and towering person. And so, I am just thrilled that he gets a little tiny bit of recognition. And really, it's not even as much as he deserves, given his consistent generosity and activity over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
None at this time, Mayor.
All right. I'll ask one question, and then we'll look for a motion. Are we able to share the date of the event? I think it might be on the agenda. Or are we not yet confirmed? And we can say, "Stay tuned very shortly" to confirm the date of the event.
I would say it's a "stay tuned."
Stay tuned very shortly for the date of the event.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Seeing no one, do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that we receive a request for honorary street sign designation for a portion of Gateway Drive and request for the Key to the City. Adopt a resolution approving an honorary street sign designation in honor of Carston Charles C.C. Sabathia for the portions of Gateway Drive between Sage and Fairgrounds to read C.C. Sabathia Way Honorary and approving the issuance of a Key to the City.
All right. Thank you. We can go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously with Vice Mayor--
All right. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to that announcement of the date, and we are staying on Keys to the City, as it has been noted. So, I'll ask our city clerk to please announce item 8E.
Receive requests on behalf of Confunction for honorary street sign designation, a proclamation, and Keys to the City. Adoption of a resolution proving an honorary street sign designation in honor of the R&B funk group Confunction for a portion of Florida Street from Mare Island Way to Solano Avenue to be designated Confunction Street Honorary and approving a proclamation and issuance of Keys to the City.
All right. Thank you. And we have Eric still here from the mayor's office, now joined by Sharon Lund. And I'll turn it over to you. And we have started the public comment period as well for this item. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Are we ready to have fun tonight? That's one of Confunction's hit songs. So, we are here tonight to do something very similar to what you just heard for C.C. Sabathia. This is a request for an honorary street sign designation and Key to the City for Confunction. I'm Sharon Lund, the Community Engagement Manager. And this is--
And I'm still Eric Zomp from the mayor's office.
So, you'll see, this slide is very similar to the one that you just saw for the C.C. Sabathia presentation. The honorary street sign designation, it was approved by council July 11, 2023. And we'll just go through some of the bullet points quickly, since you already have heard this. The individual proposed to be honored with an honorary street sign designation must have resided or worked in Vallejo during their lifetime and must have made significant and long-term contributions through cultural, humanitarian, historic, military, or professional achievement. Next slide, Manny. Thanks.
And the Key to the City, the policy is at the discretion of the mayor's office, and then comes the council for approval. It is a prestigious award to bestow honor upon distinguished persons or honored guests of the city of Vallejo and to recognize exceptional contributions and/or achievements. It should be rare and restricted to instances of exceptional service or contribution. And the nominees will be persons who have made significant contributions or who have outstanding achievements. Categories may include, but are not limited to philanthropy, business, arts and culture, volunteering, advocacy, or leadership.
And now, let's talk about Confunction. They are proud native sons of Vallejo. Many of them are here in the audience. And they founded the world-renowned R&B and funk group over 50 years ago. They met while playing band at Vallejo High School. They've released 11 albums, earned eight Billboard Top 10 R&B hits, including "Fun," "Love Train," and "Shake and Dance With Me." Founding member Michael Cooper, who is here tonight, is a 20-year member of the Solano County Sheriff's Office, and he has a commitment to public service. Next slide, please, Manny. They receive recognition. I'll take this one, I guess.
Okay, good.
National R&B Music Society Lifetime Achievement Award, Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award for a Lifetime of Service Through Music and More, Honorary Doctorates. They continue to perform worldwide to sold-out crowds. And they're performing at home in Vallejo September 6, 2025, very soon, with the city celebration the same day on September 6. And right now, Manny has some video queued up of when they were interviewed by Dick Clark on American Bandstand. And you know you've made it big when you're on American Bandstand.
That's lovely, lovely. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, before you go hitting me, they're the ones that don't know where Vallejo is. Don't blame me. And that's disgraceful, isn't it?
Everybody should know where Vallejo is.
Are you really all from the same area?
Vallejo, California. Got one guy from Fairfield.
How long has this been going on? I ran into you 10 years ago. How long have you all been together?
About 12 years now.
This is Michael Cooper. Excuse me. Would you introduce me to the rest of your friends? You know what I'd like to do while we do this, gentlemen? We'll jump back here, and then you introduce the next guy. And tell me what you do when you're not playing, when you're not working together. You have any hobbies? What do you do? Anything you talk about on the air, that is. I mean, I don't want all that private stuff. What do you do when you're not working?
I do a lot of hunting and fishing and skiing. I'm a deputy sheriff of Solano County.
See, you better find out where-- Find out where Vallejo is, or you could be in trouble. Who's this gentleman?
We call him Sweetman, Danny Thomas.
Danny, what do you do when you're not working?
I'm a freak for racquetball. I love to play racquetball.
Who's the guy behind the drums?
Oh, that's Lewis McCall.
I was going to-- I thought you were going to look back and say, "I never saw him before in my life." Lewis, what's your hobby?
I, um, I let Danny beat me in racquetball, and I work out a lot.
All right. Fair enough. I'm going to jump all the way over here, and I'll be back to catch up with you. What is your name, sir?
My name's Cedric Martin.
What do you do when you're not doing this?
Well, I'm a licensed pilot. I like to fly airplanes and all, so I fly hang gliders.
Fly hang gliders? Do you fly with him ever?
I have before, yeah.
Your name, sir?
I'm Carl Fuller.
What do you do, Carl?
Well, I do a lot of horseback riding and take care of my horse.
Him, I could go along with you. I'm not too choked up about him. Your name, sir?
Felton Pilot.
What do you do, sir?
I run computers.
Run computers?
Right.
This is a weird group. Who's the gentleman to your right?
Paul O'Rourke.
Paul, what's your hobby?
I'm a little into aviation and definitely into photography.
This is very interesting. And you've known one another since you were kids?
Kids, back in Vallejo High School.
No wonder you stayed together. It's a very-- I congratulate you. Enough of this Fall to Roll. It's great music. Are you moving away from funk a little bit?
We're going to always keep the funk base. You know, funk is definitely not dead.
All right, all right.
So, that's who we're honoring tonight.
Honoring tonight.
That's a very fun clip. Thank you, Manny, for showing us that. And you can see on this map-- Next slide, please. This is the group. They've requested Florida Street between Mare Island Way and Solano Avenue to have the signs placed saying "Confunction Street Honorary." And so, our staff recommendation tonight-- Did you want to read it, or--
Sure. It's to designate Florida Street from Mare Island Way to Solano Avenue Street as Confunction Street Honorary and grant the Key to the City and a proclamation. And the recommendation is because they have a lifetime achievement in arts and culture, and they meet the honorary street sign designation criteria and Key to the City criteria.
Yep. And Confunction founder Michael Cooper is here tonight, and the fans and supporters are here, so we'd love for them to come up. I think they've asked to speak tonight, too. Come on up.
You can raise--
Good evening to the mayor and to the council.
You can raise the podium on your lower right. There's a little problem. So, we don't want to give you back problems while you're speaking tonight.
Well, I got a very loud voice. I have to-- I try to keep it down. But yeah, good evening to the council and the mayor. I had written something down to look at and read, and I realized that if I can't talk to this wonderful body of people-- It's a small body. I usually talk to about 10,000 people a night, so I should be able to handle this. I want to thank you guys for the consideration to possibly put our names on the street. There's something very-- I used to live on Florida Street, 218 Florida. And I would come out my front door, and I would be able to see all of Mare Island. We were up on the hill. And the reason I picked Florida Street is because it was so near and dear to me, that view. So many different things and wonderful things happened to me. All I lived on Florida Street. I lived on Rainier Street, Diablo Street. These streets don't exist very much anymore. But when I moved to Florida Street, I was a young man of about 15, 16. Got my first car on Florida Street. And it just really means a lot to me to hopefully get the street honorary renamed after us. And I just want to say to everybody-- I don't want to take up too much time, but Confunction has been around the world, and just like with C.C., they never-- We never let anyone try to say, "Oh, yeah, they're from San Francisco." "Oh, yeah, y'all from Oakland, San Francisco." I said, "No, no, 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 no." We are from Vallejo, California. And on behalf of Mike Wilson, our very original guitar player, he's here tonight. Original Mike Wilson, Joe Jones has tampered around with the trombone. He was our trombonist. And of course, Danny Thomas, Cedric Martin, Carl Fuller, Felton Pilot, and the list goes on and on. But right now, our three originals are still together, coming up on 56 years. Yes. We'd like to thank you guys for considering us for the street renaming. We'd like to tell everybody here, and the board, thank you for your service, and we love you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for joining us. Why don't we go ahead and take any other public commenters on this item? I know we already heard some accolades in the previous item.
We have quite a few public speakers on this.
All right, let's hear them.
The first four are Deborah Dixon, Dr. Valerie Madison, Tony Cooper, and Clarence Isador.
Good evening, Mayor's source.
And just as we rose-- Well, there you go. You're good. I was just going to say, you can lower the podium just as well as we rose it.
This is fine right here. Thank you so much, and to all the city council members. My name's Deborah Dixon, and I am a lifelong Vallejonan. I was born here, raised my family here, and have been Michael, his mom, his dad, his cousins, his uncles, his aunties. I know the whole family. And I'm so proud of the fact that wherever they-- I've seen them all over. They always say Vallejo, California. And I am just proud to be from Vallejo, California. And I thank you all for considering this honor, this legacy that we have here, C.C. Sabathia, and of course, the Confunction. We just have a huge amount of talent that comes from this city. And so, thank you all for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tony Cooper.
Madam Mayor, council members, and fellow Vallejonans. I'm Dr. Valerie Madison, retired Vallejo police officer for 25 years, and currently a proud volunteer of a nonprofit business, House of Axe, for the past 15 years here in our fair city. I'm here today to speak on behalf of honoring one of the Vallejos' most iconic musical treasures, Confunction, by naming a street after them. Born from the heart of Vallejo, Confunction didn't just play music, they helped shape an era. Their sound, a blend of smooth R&B and high-energy funk, captured audiences across the nation. But before the gold records and the national tours and the Billboard's hits like "Love Trains" and "Fun, Fun, Fun," they were just young men growing up right here in Vallejo Streets. Their rise is more than a musical success story, it's a Vallejo success story. Through hard work, talent, undeniable soul, and they became global ambassadors for our city and never forgotten where they came from. Naming the street after Confunction is more than just a nostalgia. It's about honoring Vallejo's rich cultural legacy. It's about inspiring our youth with a reminder that greatness has roots in their very own community. Let's give Vallejo landmark that reflects pride and history and rhythm. Let's honor Confunction with a street name that tells their story, our story, and generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Cooper.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Tony Ray Cooper. I am the very proud sister of Michael Cooper. I am a lifelong resident of Vallejo. I can attest to the fact that Confunction has performed from way back, 50 Cent dances at Dan Foley for-- as Project Soul, all the way to standing-room-only performances at the Solano County Fairgrounds. I very-- am very proud to be here, and I think they very well deserve this street. And I would thank you guys in advance for giving Confunction a very well-deserved honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Clarence Isador.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Vallejo audience. My name is Clarence Isador, proud Vallejonan and retired educational administrator. I am also the conductor of funk with Confunction as their MC. I would like to tell you that it has been a journey. This group is definitely the ones to see. It's been sold-out shows each and every show. It has been people just being recognized just to say, "Wow, you guys are from Vallejo, and we love you so much." They, along with C.C. Sabathia, are keeping Vallejo on the map. Again, what a great opportunity. I want to thank each and every one of you for your service, and I'm just proud to be riding on the Love Train.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joe Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Guess you learned something new about me tonight, didn't you? Michael Cooper and I go back since the third grade. Flossdon Elementary School, which is now MIT, one of MIT campuses. I'll never forget bordering Flossdon School were apartments complex. It was called Floyd Terrace. And we used to climb over the fence in order to get to school all the time. And so, we started in band together. Michael Cooper played the clarinet. I played the trombone. Carl Fuller in the band. He-- Carl Fuller in the band, he played the trumpet. And all of us ascended to first chair. In order to be first chair, you have to audition for it and you have to be the best of the best. During elementary school, we learned in beginning band how to read music. We had wonderful, wonderful teachers and instructors. And I want to emphasize that because back in those days, in the 60s, when we were coming through, we had wonderful teachers that took a lot of time with us. Once we moved on to junior high school, Michael got this bright idea about forming a band. And so, he called us all together and he met in the living room of Ms. Cooper's house, the apartment in Floyd Terrace, and he said, "So yeah, let's do something. Let's do something. Let's get going." Started, you know, listening to music and playing music. And then Michael switched over from the clarinet, he started playing a string guitar. And now, he is one of the best lead guitarists in all of music. Once we got to Solano Junior High School, we had a magnificent band teacher. His name is Willie McKnight. This McKnight went on to become an educator and he was also principal, vice principal at Vallejo High School in his retirement days. He played a lot of music all over the country and all of the jazz bands and all of the top bands around. So he was our teacher and he made sure that we all knew how to read music and write music. That's Vallejo Unified School District and we are the products of that school district. And what we did exemplifies what was important. And all of the kids in our neighborhood wanted to be in the band or wanted to sing or wanted to do something that was artistic. And that was because of the school system. And further, we launched into the high school. At Vallejo High School, we had orchestra? We had jazz band? We had beginning band, junior band, and senior band. We were 100 strong in our marching band. Remember Cal Band Days? We'd go down to Cal and play in the band day every day. It was a conglomeration of bands from all over the area would come and we would march so proudly and so boldly and just win prize after prize. All of this came from our training within the school district. And so, it's kind of a natural for all of us to remember on that and make, only Michael will be sure that, you know, he understands that he's standing on the shoulders of a lot of other people who went that way. But he's here tonight and we want to celebrate Confunction. The Project Soul is the beginning, but the Confunction is the band that went on for 50 years. I went to their 50th anniversary when the Zulu Ball in New Orleans during Mardi Gras honored them. And it was 40,000 people in the audience and rousing applause that they received for their years and years and years of service is just been outstanding. But this tops it all. Home.
Thanks.
This, their city. Their city where all of those gentlemen were from. They were from here. And look what we raised. And look what we made happen as a city. I want to part with this. You five right there, I'm so proud of you, I just don't know what to do. You're frustrated. You're tired. You're not getting the credit that you deserve. But things like this took some effort. And I know it just didn't happen coincidentally. It happened because you are seeing the value of Vallejo. You are changing things in this city. You are changing things in this city. And the only thing I want to part with is this, there's no I in this team.
Next speaker is Escare Sawande.
She was just here. Oh, there she is.
All right, and I gave you some of the time from the previous speakers, so we didn't want to cut you off.
Hi, greetings and blessings.
You can lower it if you want, Mrs. Escare.
Let me just tell you, I'm excited about being here. I got a phone call to let me know that Confunction, you guys were going to consider what you were going to do. So, let me just tell you why I'm saying this. I got a phone call a while ago from a brother named Charles Barksdale. That's a singer and resided here for many years. He's down south now. And he contacted me and said, "You know, there's a sister that was trying to help Confunction get stuff down on the streets." So I said, he said, "Well, is there anything you can do?" I said, "I don't think there's anything I can do, but let me, I know there's one thing that I can do and that's to reach out to Brother Eric Rumps." Okay, Brother Eric Rumps cares about this community, cares about our artists, and all of the above. Everybody has said everything wonderful about Confunction. I can't add to that because they've said everything great, but let me tell you about a great memory. Years ago, we did the first Unity Day and Confunction was a part of it. We reached out, they came. They came out the side door of City Hall to the crowd and the crowd was roaring. Do you hear me? They are individuals that give back. Michael Cooper, I don't know if you remember this, but you did Black History for me at Izzy's School and Vallejo High School. You remember that? And the kids were off the chart. They were loving everything that you did. Okay, now. So, when I reach out to, I'm going to say this too, Felton Pilot. This is a brother that you can reach out to and he's going to be there. I've reached out, he's been there. And talking about the Vocational School of the Arts, I asked him if he would do a PSA for us and he said yes he would and he did. He loves this community. The world loves Confunction. And I had to come down here to tell you how excited I am that you guys are doing this. I had no idea what had transpired because I had not heard back from the lady, I didn't know what was going on. But I'm excited to know that you guys did this. I'm excited to know that you're moving forward. We have a lot of people in this community that have done a lot and enriched our names, Vallejo, out to the world. Let's honor them and give homage. Ashé.
Dr. Bishop, did you want to speak again? Your name was on, okay.
Do we have anyone online?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have three speakers online. First speaker, Sheila Tennyson. Please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. As stated, my name is Sheila Tennyson. Michael, you would know me as Sheila Chadwick. And I'm honored to participate in this today, this celebration. For decades, Confunction's music has been the heartbeat of funk and R&B, blending smooth harmonies, infectious grooves, and lyrics that lift the spirit. But Confunction has given us much more than just hit records. They've given Vallejo a soundtrack, a reminder that greatness can be born right here in our own community. They've toured the globe, topped the charts, and influenced generations of artists, but they've never forgotten their roots. Their success story is a reflection of Vallejo's creativity, resilience, and soul. Honoring them with a street and their name is more than a tribute. It's a permanent reminder to every child walking down that street that dreams are possible and that talent from Vallejo can reach the world stage. This street will not just carry their name, it will carry all of our pride, our history, and our gratitude for what they have contributed. So today, I wholeheartedly support naming the street honor of Confunction because they have earned it, they deserve it, and they will continue to inspire for generations to come. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Felton. Thank you to all the other band members and God bless.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Tanya Hawley. Please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. My name is Tanya Hawley, all the way from Atlanta, Georgia, where it is 12:07 a.m. I just want to add that. I've had the honor of serving as Confunction's publicist for over three years now, but I've known them for longer and been a lifelong fan of this incredible group of musicians. Throughout my time working with them, I've seen firsthand the impact their music continues to have, not just in Vallejo, but across the country and around the world. From longtime fans who followed their journey for decades to a new generation introduced to their sound through Bruno Mars and Silksonic's remake of Love Train, Confunction's legacy lives on and continues to grow. For over 50 years, these talented men have dedicated their lives to using their musical gifts to uplift, entertain, and bring people together. Their commitment to their craft and their audiences is unwavering and the joy they bring to the stage is simply unmatched. Renaming a street in their honor is more than a symbol, more than a symbolic gesture, it's a meaningful tribute to a group of young men who proudly represent the spirit, soul, and talent of Vallejo. On a personal note, I truly can't think of a better way to celebrate and recognize all they've given to music and to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Final speaker, Ann C. Please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Good evening, again, Mayor, council, and community members. I continue to just be so proud and grateful about the two honorariums that you have going on tonight. And I just want to point out how unusual it is that people who've had great fame and fortune outside of Vallejo still claim Vallejo and what a gift it is to our city that if we're known at all, these days sadly, we're mostly known for bad news and how great it is to be associated with such greatness, really. So I'm just so glad that we're looking at doing this and holding these up. I will say that hearing about the whole path of Confunction going from a band in junior high through the musical training they managed to have in high school, I think sadly, our schools don't provide that today and I think that's a real loss, but that's another discussion and hopefully, we can figure out a way to reinforce things like that going forward. Thank you to the city and to whomever brought these forward. It's just a moment of greatness for us. Thank you.
Is that it? All right. Thank you very much to our speakers. Thank you to everyone for joining, our members, band members for joining us. And this one, we actually can say the date, at least a date, which is, as it was already mentioned, Confunction will be performing in Dock of Bay alongside La Russel, E40, Baby Bash? Am I missing anybody? That is a lineup. So I'll look forward to seeing you all there and we'll get the proper ceremonial details out, just as we will for CC. So I do see Councilmember Gordon and then we'll go ahead and make our motion.
Yes, thank you so much for this opportunity. I am so honored to have you all here in the flesh. So when I was running my campaign, I walked down Pine Street, I don't know which one exactly lived on Pine, but they were like, "You actually are going to be a councilwoman for a representative that lived on this street." And I said, "Who?" And I think they said, "Michael, but don't, don't, am I wrong?" But anyways, is it true? Yeah, right on. And so, just to know that history in my district, which is District 6, South Vallejo, it's an honor to have you here and thank you so much for all that you've done because whoever lives there still knows you. So, thank you so much.
Thanks. Councilmember Paul Morris.
Thank you. I'm so immensely proud as a native Vallejonan and let me just say, I also play guitar and drums, so you've been so influential to generations of artists. I mean, from E40 to La Russel, just like, you know, we can't escape that legacy and, you know, I used to live on the 100 block of Carolina Street, so when we talk about that view on Florida, I know exactly what you're talking about. It's so beautiful, I love it there. Well, I moved unfortunately, but last thing, not really Confunction-related, but I see Mr. Isidore is here. I don't know if you remember me. I know you've been educator, but, you know, you used to be my dean in high school. I just want to take this opportunity because I may never do this again, but I wasn't a great student, let me put it that way. And you, you had every right to expel me. I'm not going to get, I'm not going to talk about it, but, but you definitely have me at rights. But you, you talked to me, I'll never forget the way you talked to me and you gave me a second chance to stay in high school. I'll never forget that. That changed my life forever. You know, I think about what could have been if you did expel me, but you had talked with me and I, you know, I changed my ways, so I really want to thank you. And I also didn't know you were the conductor of funk. But to me, but to me, you're an educator, so that was more important. So, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Gordon, you had one more comment.
Yes, I too want to say thank you so much to Mr. Isidore. Very, very encouragement to us parents, always open this door. And similar to you, I had to get that call too for one of my children. Not the suspension part because I wasn't having that, but anyways, I just want to thank you for being that leader to us parents, encouraging us to be involved. I served as the school side council, I served as PTA, and you always made sure that that door is open. So, I'm so honored that you get to see me here.
I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for those, those great comments and I think we're ready for a motion. Let's do it.
All right. I move to receive a request on behalf of Confunction for a honorary street sign designation and proclamation and keys to the city. I move that we adopt a resolution approving an honorary street sign designation in honor of the R&B funk group Confunction for a portion of Florida Street from Mare Island Way to Solano Avenue to be designated Confunction Street Honorary and approving a proclamation and issuance of keys to the city.
All right. I don't know, it's a tough vote. It's a tough vote, y'all. I don't know what's going to happen. All right. Thank you so much for joining us. All right. Thank you all. So we have a couple more action items. I'm going to propose we take just a brief recess in case anybody wants to greet these folks before they head out. And why don't we take a good six minutes? We'll try to come back at 20 after and we'll move on to our next item. move on to our next item. All right, friends, I'm going to get us back going, I just need one more warm body. And we have one. All right, let me go ahead and call us back to order. And after all of that fun, we are now going to look at the street sign policy. So I'm going to ask our city clerk to announce item, I believe it's 8F.
Approve administrative updates to the city council policy honorary street sign designation.
All right, we have Natalie Peterson back. I think this will be a quick, quick item, and I'll turn it over to Natalie. And we'll open up public comment period for anybody that wants to weigh in.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council. The individuals from the last two items that we heard from are really the types of individuals that when we were drafting this policy a couple of years ago, we had in mind individuals who are from here, proud to be from here, and continuing to give back to the community not only here, but on the larger stage. So with that, if I can flip forward to the next slide, Manny. Oh, sorry, back one more. There we go. The honorary street sign designation, and these are just some highlights of the policy. You have a copy of the policy in your packets. So it was approved by Council on July 11, 2023. It differs from the naming of the facility policy, which we also have for Council, as this allows us to honor, for our honorees to be both living or posthumous, and does not change the official street name. Only applicable to city streets, so there are sections in the city that are under the county's purview. We do not do honorary street sign designations on those, or like driveways to private businesses. Requests are submitted to the city manager's office for review, and the signage for, the signs remain up for 10 years and can be requested for extensions at the 10-year period. Next slide. It requires a fiscal sponsor for the request. The requister does pay for the signage and the installation. The city does provide a gifted sign to the recipient at the cost of the city. The individual or group must have resided or worked in Vallejo during their lifetime and made significant and long-term contributions through cultural, humanitarian, historic, military, or professional achievements. And all signs will have honorary on the bottom line and be placed under the original street sign, and often, and done in a separate color, just to distinguish them from the original street name. Next slide. So before you are just a couple of administrative updates that we'd like to make to the policy, particularly regarding adding clarification around ceremonial events associated with street sign designations. As we've gone through two previous street sign designations and the two requests that have come before, Council, this evening, there's been conversations about which pieces the city would own, which pieces are at the requister, or the organization, or individual who's receiving these. So adding in verbiage that says if a celebration or ceremony is to accompany a sign installation, the cost for the ceremonial event will be at the cost of the applicant and follow all applicable event permit fees and processes. And then the other major update is updating to the fiscal year fees. When this was created, we tied it to the fees that were in 2023. As our budgets change, the cost for signs, the cost for installation goes up. So bringing it current and then adding a note on there that this will be updated annually with updated fees for the cost of the signs and the installation, so we don't have to come back to Council on an annual basis to get those updated. So those are the main requests before you this evening. I am happy to talk about other aspects of the policy, or answer any additional questions that Council may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any commenters on this item?
We do, we have one person signed up, Jim Owens.
Mr. Owens, I wonder if Mr. Owens signed up for the wrong item.
I saw him here earlier.
I believe there were several other members of the public who signed up for other items under the impression that they were going to be able to speak for the last item.
Shoot, okay. Well, if we see him come back in, we'll get to him. Do we have anyone online?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one speaker online.
All right, let's call him.
Ann C., please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Hi, Council and Mayor, sorry to weigh in on this. In my work, in my former corporate work, part of what I used to do was to solicit bids and... and process orders for printing and design. And so my request is that the city look at the fees for quote "design" and the cost for the signs. I will say that the design work in particular seems high, given that I believe the design is actually done. It's really a matter of typographical production for the sign. And so I think that that fee could be reduced at this point. And then I'm just surprised that the unit cost on the signs is as high as it is. And I raise this because although the overall net cost might seem low, I will tell you that my foster father worked, he attended 20 years of planning commission and city council meetings. He was on 25 boards and commissions, including one of the founding members for Red Robin, and all kinds of things. And he had dozens of kids through his house, including me. And so I've looked into, well, gosh, maybe he should have a sign. But in general, I can't go that high. And in general, I think the city needs to have a policy of just charging cost and not looking to have a little extra in that. The second thing I would ask you to do, and this is extra credit, bonus round things, is to look at some of the ceremonial things that the city of Benicia has. Around a fountain near their library, they have ceremonial bricks that people can purchase. And if you go down their main street, they have different ceremonial tiles. And so those are things that could be sort of a tiny little revenue generator for Vallejo and also a source of pride for people who don't have a $900 to $1,000 budget for doing something where they want to make, you know, make a motion or leave an impression on a city. So please do look at those costs and consider the other things that I think could be fun for Vallejo. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other commenters?
No other speakers at this time, Mayor.
All right. So I see Councilmember Gordon, and then I'll make my suggestion.
Thank you so very much. I literally was just watching something like this through another city council. I do have a little, a small concern, as the caller just pointed out, with the fees. You know, for that person who volunteers and have done so much work, you know, those fees can be a challenge. Is there any way that we can create a fund to help those to apply for maybe some fee waivers? Because I, you know, there's a lot of people that I've met along the way that has, like, for example, Ms. Wilson is one of those examples. And maybe they can or cannot afford that, but is there something that we can do? Because I know you can't offset the cost of signs. I know, I looked them up. So I was just wondering, is there something that we can do to help offset the other individuals that may not have that kind of money available?
So through the city manager and the city attorney, correct me if I am wrong, but I believe that fee waivers would be something that could come before council if council was interested in either creating that as part of this policy or accepting one-off requests for future honorary designations, if council would be willing to accept honoring, doing that, and either waiving or reducing the fees at that point in time.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Matthias.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a concern with this policy, and that's the duration. It says the honorary street signs, they can't exceed or go beyond the 10 years. Why did you set, why was that limit set? And why can't we just give the applicant one street sign for them to take? And then why can't we just leave the one that's up there up there forever? I mean, this is history, as much as it is, you know, an acknowledgement of the many contributions that these folks have made on behalf of the city. So just curious about that.
Yes, so when we were creating the policy, we looked at several different cities, both small and large, that do these, and many of them had time restraints to them. I think predominantly with the cost of the maintenance over time, since it is one of the fees that's associated. But that is at council's discretion. If council thinks, would like to have these stay up for a longer period of time, that's within your discretion to change, and we can do that this evening.
Yeah, I would just, I would just sort of have the council think about that. We've got to honor those that have done so much for the city, and I don't think that that should be 10 years. I think we should put something up and, you know, take on that maintenance cost. It'll be historic for generations, to learn from folks who have paved the way. And also, it will continue to build our collective understanding of the many folks who have contributed to our culture and our history here in the city of Vallejo. So that would be the only amendment I would suggest that we make.
Councilmember Paul Myers.
Not directly related to the street signs, but I was also encouraged maybe looking into those banners you see in some cities, like in Benicia, they have them for those who have killed in action, soldiers, sailors, marines from wars past. I think that'll be a great commemoration for those who have served. And yeah, would be great.
If I may just respond to that one, that is actually going to be coming through to the council from the Economic Development Commission.
Oh, fantastic. Great. I didn't have to say anything.
Was that what you were gonna say too, Natalie? Okay. So what I was gonna add is I had mentioned in our conversations in going through this, you know, these two were slam dunks. I think we have to find the perfect way to sort of split the difference. If you don't want to give them out like candy, because it dilutes the impact, but you do want to be able to recognize folks. And so I recommended adding one more step or something as part of the process where the council member whose district it's in gets brought in just to, you know, inform them in case there's any community members or folks that need to, you know, be part of the process of community engagement. That was one of the pieces of feedback we heard from the crest, was that there was no community engagement in the decision to rename Gateway. And, you know, the people that live on and around that street, I think, should be able to be engaged. And, I mean, obviously, everybody supports the designation and supports the honoree, but just finding one more step in which the mayor and the council member for that district can quickly determine, you know, do we need to do some community engagement here? And do a quick check, you know, in case we start getting applications from just everybody in the world, have one more layer of sort of accountability there.
Through the mayor, so I did, for under item 2.1, requests for honorary street sign designations, if council so chooses to move forward with that, would recommend that the last sentence read something to the effect of, once reviewed by the city manager or their designee, the application will be presented to the mayor and council district representative for review, and then presented to the city council for approval of the honorary street sign designation to have that second level review. And at that point in time, can work with the city manager's office staff that's working on it if there is that need for additional outreach or conversations or information gathering.
Thanks. I mean, I personally think that makes sense. I don't think we need to add a step to the process, but just to add that layer so nobody is surprised when something comes before council, like, oh, wow, they're renaming the street in my district, and I didn't even know. All right, with that, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move we approve administrative updates to the city council policy honorary street sign designation.
For clarification, can we, with the additional language that I just read in, and did we want to look at the additional time or removing the time limit?
Or maybe renewing the fee for, removing the fee for renewal?
So for renewal, there's no fee. It would just have to come from the applicant. But that could over time not happen, depending on where the applicant is or their representatives may be. So we can, there is no fee for the renewal. There's just the fee associated with the maintenance long term. Right now, it's written in there, assuming maintenance twice over the 10-year tenure.
Okay. So Councilmember Matthias, would it capture what you were saying if we said they paid once and then they can renew it without having to keep paying?
I mean, I'm sorry. It's already getting kind of late. So here's what, here's sort of my position on this. Someone goes through this process, they get the designation, right? And that sign, that honorary street sign goes up, that should be up there for the rest of time. I don't know about applications and renewals and all this other stuff. I do think that the city should take on the cost. We shouldn't be cheap about this. And we should just ensure that we have the highest quality street sign put up and that that stays up there so that no matter how much time goes by, folks can learn more about their history and folks who, you know, contributed to the city that they have, you know, at that moment in time. That's just my opinion. And I could tell you where I grew up, there was a gentleman who'd lost his life at a pretty young age. They honored the street, and then they had like a mural that went up to. And, I mean, that, I'm almost hitting 40 now, and that's still there. And it's something that, you know, folks research and they look into, and they get to learn more about his life and his history. So that would be my recommendation, but I don't know how the rest of the council feels, that it be left up permanently.
And through the chairs, don't forget minds as well about if someone puts in and they can't afford it.
It sounds like that might be doable within the current, like, is that doable within the policy as it is?
Process in general, for any fees that the city has, they can come before council as a board for removal or limiting them. Okay.
What I was trying to do is eliminate that embarrassment that they may feel, you know, if we just put it in, to it now, because she said if we could do it tonight, you know, that way they don't have to do that, have to do that with the embarrassment and saying, oh, I can't afford it, you know?
I think there would likely need to be direction around who would qualify or what those qualifications would be. So there may need to be more work if it was something that we didn't want to bring forward before council for individual approvals upon request.
What do you mean? I'm sorry. So if it was determined that they qualified, let's just say that, okay? They just couldn't afford it. So I'm asking, do, could, do you already have in system a fee waiver or no?
That request would come before the council for a fee waiver, where it, how it currently is.
And I think what Natalie meant when she said determine if they qualify, it's the waiver would be a needs-based waiver. We would need to have some criteria to determine who qualified for the fee waiver if we weren't,
Right, right, right.
if we weren't gonna bring it to the city council. And what she's saying is, city staff would need some, would want some direction or at least some council approval of what that criteria is. Yeah.
Maybe some homework or something? Oh, you have something, Ms. Veronica?
I actually had another item to speak to that was a suggestion.
Okay. To this, to what I'm asking or no?
No, it was to Councilmember Matthias's question.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and add that?
I can do that. So if the council does wish to eliminate the 10-year period, I do recommend that you retain the language following that. That says the city has the right to remove any honorary street sign designation directed by council by majority vote. And there are obvious reasons why something could happen where you needed to take one down. As long as it's a majority vote of the council, I think it's appropriate to leave that language.
I think I'm okay if that's an amendment. And then it sounds like maybe the fee waiver is something that would have to come back.
Okay.
But at least the direction could be that one be made available.
So it could be part of this conversation tonight that you could bring that back then?
You can, part of the motion tonight, you can provide direction for staff to come back to council with a proposal for a fee waiver.
Or reduce, or reduce cost.
Or reduce, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I'd like to make that.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll do, we'll add those as friendly amendments to the motion. Yep, and then we can vote on it if we're all okay with it.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously with Vice Mayor absent.
Thank you. All right, that's gonna bring us to 8G. I'll ask our city clerk to please announce this item.
Consider request and provide direction to staff relating to the creation of a budget and finance subcommittee, including type of subcommittee, number of members, and charge and duties of the subcommittee.
All right, thank you. So we'll open up public comment on this item. This is follow-up from when we approved the budget. And at the end of that item, when we approved the budget, I had made a motion for, to explore the creation specifically of an ad hoc subcommittee for just this upcoming year's budget process, to figure out the timeline for the process and do some of the work that we had talked about in terms of how our unsolicited proposals dealt with. How are things routed through Measure P? How are things routed through PB? How are routed, you know, what's appropriate for where and where we do? Hopefully, work that can be done once and then be done. I think staff came back with the possibility of also having a budget and finance subcommittee that is just a standing committee that can work on budgetary issues. And so I'll turn it over to Reka if you had, I don't know if you had a presentation specifically on the item or anything you want to share, and then I'll open up to comments. And hopefully, we can give some direction fairly quickly on this, so that we can move forward with creating something.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. You made my life very easy. I do not have a presentation, and you said what I was going to say. So with that said, in the staff report, we've covered, there are three main categories. We are trying to get council direction on the type of subcommittee, because you can either have the regular subcommittee or an ad hoc subcommittee. The regular subcommittee needs to follow the Brown Act. The ad hoc subcommittee does not. At the same time, the ad hoc subcommittee cannot go on perpetually. It's usually within a year, if Veronica can clarify that. And then tonight, we would also like to know if it is an ad hoc, then how many members council would like to see on that subcommittee. So we are trying to get direction on the type of subcommittee, the number of members, the scope and duty, and the duration. And then based on that direction, we will come back with a resolution formalizing the whole process. As far as the duties, again, I just put a few down in the staff report, such as timing of the city budget process, discussing the long-range forecast, monitoring the city's financials, and these were just suggestions, because it was an open topic. And so if council has other items that they would like to see the subcommittee do, maybe we need to first start with the type of subcommittee. So I'll stop with that.
All right, thank you. Do we have any commenters on this item in person or online?
No speakers at this time, Mayor.
All right, wonderful. So my proposal would be, right now, I'm not seeing anybody at the moment, so my proposal would be ad hoc subcommittee, one year, three members, although it could easily be two, and have it tasked with the timeline for next year's budget process, the process for how different funds are routed through PB, and basically just those processes. Review and provide suggestions to revamp the organizational structure, like doing some of the work that we put in through this process of, you know, we're gonna have to reassess our organizational structure, you know, to get to that structural balance. All those one-time tasks, and maybe one additional task we could give the committee is, should that committee decide that a standing finance committee would be beneficial, to then create at least a draft of what that standing committee would look like to bring back to council for approval. So that would be my, those one-time pieces, an ad hoc for those one-time pieces of procedures on how funding routes through approval for different places, figuring out the timeline and public engagement for next year's process, and the way that we're gonna find the checkpoints in how we assess our organizational structure going into next year's budget process. That was what I had proposed at the last meeting. So we'll start with that, and if folks have stuff they want to add or change, Councilmember Matthias.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I'll go with whatever the majority decides in terms of the structure. The only addition I want to make, Reka, to this ad hoc committee for the council's consideration is around the investment policy. So I would like this ad hoc committee to also look at our investment policy and suggest whether or not we need to make any changes to it. I've asked questions earlier on in the process around our investment policy, and I know the city manager said, you know, there's not much we can do, you know, it's, there's guidelines. But under the mandate of this ad hoc committee, I would like for them to look at that. Because other cities have treasurers that pay attention to this stuff.
other cities have treasurers that pay attention to this stuff. They look at the quarterly reports. They then compare it to the policy that they have, then they make recommendations to council. We don't really have that. So I would want these folks to look at that.
If I can clarify, we do have Chandler Investments and they do review our policy every year and they look at what the state guidelines are and if, like a couple of years back, the council wanted, they wanted certain language to be put in of the kind of investments that the city could do and we added that. And that's what we bring during the budget time. We, you know, look at that policy again, just to make sure that we are in alignment with what the state has mandated and reissue, re-adopt that new policy. And at that time, the treasurer, who is the city, who's the finance director, is reappointed.
I, I totally hear you on that. And I would still want a member of the public to look at those Chandler quarterly reports and to also look at our investment policy and submit their own recommendation, you know, and explore whether or not that's something that should be looked at as part of a permanent committee. So that's along with the way of making one small addition, Mayor.
That sounds good to me. Councilmember Letoju.
So in many cities or counties, they have a budget and finance subcommittee that's standing. And that committee is looking at all of these different things along with taxes, fees, all the things that, all the different financial instruments that help the city function well. So I think we need to think about really, what, why are we creating a budget and finance committee? And does it really make sense to create a budget and finance committee just to look at one year and how we're going to move the budget? It takes a lot of time to do the budget and in a moment, it'll be time to start planning for the budget all over again. It's time. We're almost there. We're, we're finishing audits. So we should be, by the time we hit September, we should be starting our budget. And we really, as a city, if we're going to run our city well, we need to have a budget and finance committee where we are looking at taxes, fees and development and ordinances that literally impact our finances. Investments, all of those things should really be discussed in a finance and budget committee. And then it comes, it's usually a subcommittee made up of members on council. And then it comes to the broader council. So by the time we get to really digging into the budget, all this work that we really didn't get done this past year is, someone has been paying attention to all that work with staff. And then you have a much better discussion at council by doing so. So I think we really need to think about what are we trying to achieve as it relates to how our city is going to be run in the long term.
Councilmember Paul Maras.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm coming from a place of really open-mindedness and I'm not trying to say I'm going to be for or against this, but what I want to ask is, and this is to Councilmember Letoju's point, is that what is the problem we're trying to solve? And I think once we elaborate on a little bit, I know you kind of went over a list of things that you want to go over and that's, you know, I showed those issues as well. But I think going back from, starting from like, what's the problem we're trying to solve? That will inform whether it's a standing committee versus an ad hoc. And I, and in asking that of myself, I question whether, is this redundant or this could be simplified some other way? For instance, I already made the request for a long-term financial plan because, you know, that kind of incorporates all the things that I'm looking at. To Councilmember Letoju's point, it's just like, well, there's the, the fees, you know, what, what are we doing more in terms of gaining more in terms of property taxes, economic development, the whole gamut? And also, you know, I want to look into processes as well as far as, you know, us as a body, you know, how we're making requests. So I just don't know. I really, I mean, I think this is just, I guess, a question to you, Mayor. You know, maybe you could elaborate a little bit more, maybe you could convince me, like, what is the problem we're trying to solve? And, and maybe that'll like help illuminate which way we should go.
Yeah, I mean, I think to Councilmember Letoju's point, there's value, a lot of cities do have a standing budget committee because I think when we got to the budget this year, there were a lot of issues that could have been worked out in advance that then we were trying to work out in just a month or two and we had to have extra meetings. The big thing that I would like us to do that is a one-time set of work is I think the city passed Measure P and created a Measure P Oversight Committee, but never created a policy or, or a system through which the Measure P Committee actually gives input into priorities that then inform the requests that come to them and how those requests tie into the council's approval of the budget. What Measure P was in the first year to seemed to be sort of, oh, this thing popped up, let's use P. And it, it, the, the Measure P Commissioners were feeling like stuff was just coming to them and they were having to approve one-by-one ad hoc when in fact it would have been helpful for them to get an overall vision for what do we want to do with the entire entirety of P and include that in our goal setting and include that in our big budget process. I don't have the answer to how to do that. That was what I was hoping the committee could, the subcommittee could work on. And we have participatory budgeting. So it's like you have, you know, say a community member wants to do a music festival and they want $50,000 for a music festival or they want $100,000 for a youth summer program. Should that go to PB? Should that go to Measure P? Should that just come to council? What's the order? How is that determined? That was what I was envisioning there. Not to say that there also isn't value in just having a standing budget and finance committee. Councilmember Gordon, did you have follow-up?
Yeah, sorry, if you don't mind. So I, I agree with everything you said. I think that's a huge one. The only other big one that doesn't, you know, can be resolved some other way is just we, you know, I've been here for two and a half years. I don't feel very comfortable that we have a process that is very responsive, not only to us but to the community as far as their needs. There is this sentiment, and whether it's fair or not, is that by the time it gets to us, you know, come June, it's, it's a little baked in, right? And so, you know, I, I think there should be some sort of process, some sort of visualization, some sort of information sharing way in advance where, you know, we have a say as far as, here are our goals. And we're also cognizant of like, here's how much money we got to play around with. And like, if we had that way earlier on, that would invoke a lot more creative discussions versus, okay, they only give us this much, right? And that's not really fair. And then later on, we're just trying to jam in like, oh yeah, I'll request this and that. And it's like, it's, it's pretty much akin to discretionary funding. So I, I think what you're talking about, we clean up the Measure P Committee and just what I'm talking about, those are the huge ones. As far as strictly just like the budget process, I think that needs to get cleaned up. That, I feel that when you mention it, I feel that's kind of more appropriate for an ad hoc committee. And it's just like, we'll figure it out and then once we're done, we're done.
Yeah, and this, I forgot the special funds too, because we had this, wow, we have these opioid funds, like, what do we have? What are their criteria? How do we make those decisions? That was the other piece. Councilmember Gordon, thank you for your patience.
Yes, thank you so much. That was what I was about to say. I've heard in the community that sometimes having all these different avenues, I got to go through here, through here, through here, through here. And by the time it's needed, not only do they lose some of their participants or maybe their funding, they lose the opportunity for the whole project in itself. Or I hear that only, we only got 5,000 and that person only got 30,000. And so it's kind of like hard, but I want to make sure that, one, that we still have the ultimate decision here. And I want to make sure whatever they're actually asking for is actually what is going, that they, what they're going to get. Because I have had people say a lot of things and they see that there's some favoritism happening. And, or when they're presenting, let's say, Blueberry Field, I don't want nobody to get in trouble, so I'm going to make that up. They're presenting and they could just see right away the answer's going to be no. You know? And they went through all that process and by the time if they want to rebuttal that, get here, again, their project is out the door. So I kind of see what, what my colleague Letoju is pointing out, that it, it can be very cumbersome, very cumbersome. Thank you.
Councilmember Letoju.
So I'm just going to bring us back. We need to decide, is this a ad hoc committee or is this a standing committee that is doing the work of finance and budget and really helping the council along with staff guide where the city is going financially?
I mean, I see value in both. My proposal was to start with an ad hoc and have one of the tasks for the ad hoc be to create the, as they sunset, to be, to create the, the existing standing committee because I think there's enough one-time work to be done on some of this Measure P stuff. That's my proposal. I'm open to alternative proposals because certainly there's demonstrated need for both.
So I think, I think, I just, with all due respect, I don't, I don't see the work of a budget committee, our finance and budget committee taking on the Measure P. That's one piece of the puzzle in all the finance work we were talking about that literally has been used in different ways, I'm just going to say it, to plug in holes. And because things are just brought and dropped at different times as the city is trying to get its feet on the ground for the budget year. And I think where we get away from having these one-time things and really getting to a place where we understand our budget, we understand our finances, we really work, are working with staff to have a cadence as Andrew enters into his next year, moving the city financially forward. It is not these one pieces, it's being able to look at the holistic picture. When I see you dropping funds on me that all of a sudden you have, oh, we have these funds that came from here, from here, from there, and we're like, where is this in the budget? Where's all of these things? You're not having time to have the real discussions when you talk about finance. Finance is an everyday thing. And we really need to determine, are we going to spend the time to do the holistic work and lay the framework so all these things are working and you're, and you really understand how we're using our money in the city and how we want to use that money? That includes grants, all the things that come here at one point in time versus really being able to talk about what is our financial picture holistically is really important from my perspective.
All right, Councilmember Paul Maras and then Matthias.
A hundred percent agree. I don't think that's something where we need a standing committee to look at it, you know, month in, month out. I think to accomplish that, we need, in my opinion, an ad hoc committee. We figure out the process, we work with the director and the staff to figure out like how to make a process that works and so that it's just automatic at a certain point where we get those reports back and we shouldn't have to be there to, you know, pour through the data. We shouldn't have to. So once we have a process, you know, fix that process, then we'll just cancel the, the ad hoc committee, not cancel, but, you know, dissolve it.
Councilmember Matthias.
I don't know what you guys are ultimately going to decide on this one, but there's just two points I want to make. Number one, I'm pretty sure, if I'm not mistaken, I just don't know where it is in the process, that the Measure P Oversight Committee had a series of recommendations that they approved via resolution that were, that was supposed to be forwarded to us. We have not, I haven't seen it. I don't know where it is, but I do know that former chairman Salmeron and her team worked on making recommendations to streamline processes. And that was some, that was several months ago. So that's one. Two, personally, what I'm struggling with in relation to this conversation has to do with another subject. So like I said in the last meeting, I find value in having a standing committee, especially considering all the questions that have surfaced now over decades regarding our finances, to have a group of citizens looking at this, thinking about this, partnering with us, I think can help bring that clarity and get us to a place where we also have another, you know, standing committee that's like helping us figure some of this stuff out because we can't solve it all, it's impossible. But what I will also say is, what I'm looking forward to is, and city manager Murray knows where I'm going with this, there's a report that you guys owe us on all of the boards and commissions. What would make sense for us to consolidate? What would make sense for us to keep behind? And so I just, it would be great to see that report first and then to figure out, okay, if we do this much consolidation, then we would theoretically have this space for this other committee to exist to deal with this problem. Because otherwise, we're creating this new ad hoc committee and then asking Director Nihard to then, I'm sorry if I'm butchering, I need a vacation. But then we're just asking her to staff another committee and she's already on Measure P and she's also answering a million questions from us. And so we have to balance the need to solve these problems with the additional responsibilities we're putting on staff. And I think having that 30,000-foot conversation around these boards and commissions, which Benicia just did a year ago, if I'm not mistaken, can then help us figure out, okay, this is what needs to happen and then these are the other problems we have to solve for. So that's my personal opinion. And that's all I got on this subject.
Councilmember Mutulik.
I, I mean, just based on this conversation, I'm, we're still having a hard time trying to figure out exactly what we're trying to do with this. I think, to the point, we're identifying what we're not doing right, but by creating, but what, what is the authoritarian that this committee is going to be able to do? Whether it's ad hoc or a standing committee? Are we going to be able, are we, is this committee going to be able to direct, Director Nihard to do or change things that we eventually as a council have to approve anyway? So what, what is the time for, what, so I'm trying to wrap my head around, what is, what, what are we, once again, trying to identify, what are we supposed to be doing with this ad hoc committee, with this, whether it's an ad hoc or a standing committee? What are these? I, I see the goals here, but it doesn't give me the, I'm not getting the sense of the roadmap because once again, just talking about Measure P, we're talking about stuff that hasn't happened in over six months. So what is this ad hoc committee or the standing committee going to be able to expedite, fix the things that we haven't talked about where we still haven't even gotten our, what is that, our? Well, even with PB. I mean, those are two different beasts that people are going to be asking for money on a daily basis, monthly, weekly basis, that that committee is going to have to try to direct. So I'm, I'm a little bit, are we taking on more? I mean, what is this, what, what are the marching orders of what this, what are standing or, or ad hoc committee is going to be able to do? And then maybe we can figure out what is this road, what is this pathway that we're trying to achieve, which goes to the ultimate answer? What are we, what is this committee supposed to be doing? What is, what is the actual marching orders? Because we're, we're creating, in my mind, we're just creating more work for us that we can't even get done with what we're doing right now. So I'm, I just want to give, help us figure out what is that, what is that pathway we're trying to achieve right now?
I mean, I'm of the opinion that having a committee helps us get through that because I think it's, I think one of the things we've learned over the past seven months is that having a conver, trying to have a conversation, starting at zero with all seven of us is, I mean, we've worked through it sometimes and gotten to conclusions, but having a trusted group of two or three of us that's able to just flush it out in advance and come back with a proposal and say, okay, you know, this is, this is what we worked through and this is, this is what we're proposing for the process to deal with the fact that we haven't gotten this update in six months or that this process has been clunky. To me, that saves us a lot of work and, and saves the, you know, it, it makes it more efficient and it, it solves a lot of those problems before they start. That, that's my position. I, again, between ad hoc and standing doesn't, doesn't matter as much to me. I think ad hoc tends to be less work for staff and the agency because the standing has to be in this room and, and staffed and streamed and all that. Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, I do have a little concern. Just make sure I clarify, who are the individuals? Just to make sure I heard you correctly. Who would be the, who would be the, so that would be one of us?
It would be among, it would be a group of, subset of two or three of us, just like we did with public safety and police reform. A subset. A subset of us that would work on this specific issue.
Go ahead. I was going to say something. Maybe you're going to, I hope you touch on what I'm thinking. Go ahead.
The city attorney.
I think we're now talking about three different things. So I just want to, you actually expanded, well, Councilmember Mathias, if I understood him correctly, expanded the options from a council ad hoc subcommittee, which was what part of one of the questions in front of you, or a council standing subcommittee. He's actually suggesting something different, if I understood it, which was essentially a committee or commission that would have other than council members on it that would provide advice and counsel to the council around finance and budget. Now, can you do that? Of course you can do that. It's not what was originally suggested, but it is a third, I suppose, option for the council to consider. The difficulty there, of course, is you're, you're creating another full layer to the budget. Now, that's up to you, whether that's something that you all want to do. Versus, I think, the streamlining that was originally suggested in the original ask or suggestion was to try to like drill down in a, I'll call it quicker and easier manner. But that was, as I understood it, a third option that was being suggested. So I just wanted to point that out before we got hung up on Subcommittee A or Subcommittee B, that we've now got Subcommittee A, Subcommittee B, and potentially Committee C.
All right.
So that's not where I was going, but thank you for that. My concern that I'm having is, one, if one of us have a preference or something versus someone else, will we be left out of that opportunity? I mean, bear with me, it was working great in my head. So if I have, if I have you, you and you, and then you all would look at the work more in depth? Is that what I hear you saying? And would that create a person to be eliminated from their work field? And thank you for that, I'm seeing your head, so. And then would that create that person to have to work overtime to provide that information to you? How, you know, that's what I'm concerned about. So it's kind of like what you're saying, oh, we're looking at, for example, Department Strawberry. They have 5,000 people. They got all this money. And you will be looking through that? Because by the time that happens, it will be right back to where we started. That is just kind of what I'm thinking about. It really sounded great in my head. Sorry about that, everybody. It is that time of the hour. But yeah, what is, what would that really look like? Can you just really break that down for me?
You're asking me? So the commission wouldn't, in, again, as I proposed it, the subcommittee wouldn't be making financial decisions. It wouldn't be deciding who gets funding. It would be, it would literally be figuring out the process through which we're going to review and look at all of these things. And the timeline and when certain things are going to go before certain commissions and council, when there's going to be community engagement, et cetera. So that, that was my original, what I originally proposed. What a typical budget finance subcommittee will do is do a deeper dive into the budget with staff in advance of the budget getting presented to city council in order to, you know, raise concerns, address things, you know, work through, work through certain matters. And that committee would be appointed by the city council. So they'd be given authority to kind of go in and dig. Of course, it would come back to the full council for approval, but you'd be giving these folks extra capacity and kind of authority to have, have more robust and in-depth discussions. So not all seven of us have to get into that level of detail. That would be the purpose of a, a standing committee.
I just have a little concern about that. I feel like we all got voted in. And I feel like we should be part of the whole entire conversation. It's kind of like why we do the two-by-two type of thing. I just really feel like that, that defeats of us being who we are. We might as well get a, throw out an application and work for the company, for the city. I feel like us as a voting members, we should be a part of it from the beginning to the end. And it should not just be one or two of us. It should be all of us. That's why, that's my concern.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Mathias.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to kind of tell you where I'm at. And then I think we should just kind of go around and make a decision here. So personally, I would not be supportive of a subcommittee made of council members to address this issue. But I would be supportive of a committee of our citizens who have the experience and can help support that work on an interim basis to help sort out some of these things that you guys have talked about. I don't think I have the bandwidth and we, we still haven't had any Public Safety Committee meetings. I don't know what we're doing or where we're at with Cal DOJ. And so I would want to focus on that and make sure we get that right to finish out this year. But if the council wants to explore a committee comprised of citizens, I'm okay with that. And then what I also said is also true, that I think we need to have that bigger conversation about the boards and commissions. And that should be sooner rather than later. Because I think the moment we figure that big piece out, that'll then give us some sense, hopefully, of like what is feasible on the part of staff to help support the areas that we do need some focus on. Otherwise, we're just tacking on more things. And I think that could be a disservice to the community and also to staff. Because we can create something, but then if through this process it says we should eliminate it, then they're out, you know? So that would be my kind of final vote on that, on those pieces.
Other comments from folks? I don't mind a citizen commission. I just think we need to get ready to, to Councilmember Lettigou's point. We need to get ready to get it staffed. And it is going to require, something like that is going to require work from us because we're going to have to create an interview process and an application process and interview and appoint people to it. So that would be my concern is how can we get that done now with the least amount of work? I can just, I'm not seeing any other lights. I mean, I can just make my motion for an ad hoc. And if people want to vote it down, they can vote it down. So I'll move that we create an ad hoc budget and finance subcommittee to go through this next fiscal year's budget process. That committee's task can include working with the Measure P Commission and their recommendations to create procedures for Measure P, creating a plan to create some type of committee, making a recommendation to create, you know, whether it's a citizens review committee or something to bring back to the council. And what was the other piece? Those are really the big things. The, the timing and, the timing and public engagement for next year's process. And, you know, potentially exploring how the long-range financial plan is going to come back to council. So like all of those process things. And if the subcommittee comes back, meets once and says, hey, let's create a citizen committee, great. Then at least we've done it and we've knocked it out. So I'll make that motion.
Madam Mayor, may I ask when you want this to come back?
So we'd want it to come back in September with, yeah, to be comprised of three, I mean, up to three. If we say three and we appoint two, it's not going to kill us, right? So we'll say three members of the council. Yeah.
I'm missing about.
Yeah, she already opened the vote.
I'm missing about.
Did you have a question? Okay, go ahead with your question. You're off mic, though.
So I just want clarity because we just said a lot right here in what you're trying to achieve. And what I think I really am hearing more importantly is that you're asking for an opportunity for process improvement more than a true budget and finance.
And the reason I, and the reason I moved that is it didn't appear that there was support here for a standing budget committee.
So, so if you're looking at a process, what is the first thing you want to achieve? Just, you know, since it's, since you're not saying it's standing, what, what is it that you want to achieve in the first piece of it? Because you've added a lot of things, so it's just, it's really about process.
It's about process. It's about the timeline for next budget process. So when is the city council going to be updated? When are the budget workshops? When are the hearings? When are things happening? How is PB getting folded in? How is Measure P getting folded in? Creating all of those processes for next year? So we're not just getting ad hoc requests here and there and we don't know how it fits into the big picture. And that committee could also be tasked with determining, making a recommendation to the full council of, we want to create this citizen commission, or we want to create this task force, or we want to create a standing committee. Because it's, it sounds to me from everyone that we do not have support for one particular mode going forward. So I made that motion knowing that it's, it could very well get shot down, but I, I think we need to do something. I don't want to leave here not having done anything because I think we all need to see this budget process improve and we need to get going on it ASAP.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gordon opposed and the vice mayor absent.
All right. Thank you. So we'll bring that back in September. And then what we'll do is we'll have either Narcissa or Eric or whoever's in the office, we can gate, we can get council members' interest so we can make a nomination when that comes back to, for appointments. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Reka. All right, that is going to bring us to our information calendar. We have two information items. I'm hoping we can get through them expeditiously. And we're very excited for both of these because these are things that the council requested and has been wanting updates on. So the first is our update on the marina. So this is item 9A. And we have our interim public works director, Oscar Alcantara here. Thank you for joining us. And we'll go ahead and start our public comment clock and I'll turn it over to our director.
Good evening, Mayor Sors, councilmembers. So just a quick update on the marina. Due to significant silt accumulation and just deterioration, Dock A is currently unusable. We also got notice from BCDC that we needed to remove it. So Foth and Van Dyck prepared a PSNE. This was a competitive bid. We opened the bids on July 30th. A power engineering construction company came in with the low bid for removal at 400, 646. So, next slide, please. Currently, Foth and Van Dyck are working on our permits for 2026 dredging season. This would be ideally a 10-year dredging permit. This project would only be feasible if we had additional budget allocated. Mobilization for dredging is costly. This is a typo. We expect it to be about 135 to 200 for mobilization. Dredging prices in construction are only, no design pre-construction included in these estimates. Cost for dredging the entire marina, these are numbers provided by Foth, is 22 million for the entire marina. North basin and south basin would be roughly 4 million, which you can see in the drawing there. And that would be the entrance to the marina, all the way to the, to the fuel dock on the north marina and be the fairway on the south marina. Currently, we have 790,000 in our dredging budget. We have the emergency dock repair or replacement of Dock A with the 646 estimated construction costs. We have the abandoned boat removal grant, which is a safe grant, currently stands at 78,000. And this is for removing derelict vessels from the street. And we have 1.6 million in the seawall sedimentation, which is a grant and local match consisting of soft costs, which is where Foth and Van Dyck are being paid for. Since May of 2019, we've had F3 managing the marina and their term expires 6/30 of next year with an option to extend for an additional five years. And additional updates, currently the marina has a 73% vacancy. And this, of course, is due to the silt. The boatworks business has already left. The, the building is empty. We've taken possession of the building. And Zio Fredo's will be running their, end of the lease in September of 2026. And they are actively looking to sell their business. And on our side, we're looking for a tenant to replace them as well as the boat docks, the boatworks building.
Oscar, if I may, I think we might have breezed past what might have been slide number two that talked about the market study. I don't know if you've had a chance to.
My bad, sorry.
Let's go back to.
Yeah, so I think Foth and Van Dyck already presented the, their sedimentation study in January. And currently they're working on the marina market study. And the goal of that, of course, is to, is to reduce the amount of dredging. Get some dredging going and then keep it at a consistent basis.
So just to touch a little bit more on the marina market study. So we have this master agreement with Foth and Van Dyck. They're an engineering firm. They're, have been looking at all of the silting, looking at how the configuration of the seawalls and the docks are contributing to sedimentation, identifying what the dredging needs are. But I think one piece that we haven't had, important piece of information that Foth and Van Dyck have subbed contract for is a market study, which is going to determine what the right size, the best size and configuration of the marina is, what's sustainable for us. So rather than investing in rehabilitating the marina in its exact current configuration, we want somebody to look at what the market demand is for slips in this location, what the appropriate sizes are. Given that, what an appropriate design is, how do you design that marina that has the right carrying capacity to minimize the capital and ongoing maintenance costs? So I think the, as Oscar has presented, there are a lot of different analyses underway. And we already have some, we already have some analysis. We have some work underway to position us to dredge. But we also really need to understand what we think the marina should look like, which I don't think we know. So, Oscar, do you know what the, the timing of the market study is?
No, just that they're working on it. And we're also currently applying for additional grants, repair grants for, for the marina.
So I think when Foth and Van Dyck came and presented their sedimentation study, which I think they presented to the city council during the time that I've been with the city, so within the past year. I think they estimated that the market study was a relatively short term exercise, meaning that it wasn't going to take a long time to complete. So if you could return to send some information to the city council, letting them know what the completion date of that is, I think that would be useful. Because again, I think knowing what the market is going to support and what's sustainable financially for the city in terms of the marina is a really important baseline piece of information to make other decisions from.
All right. Thank you. Why don't we go ahead and take public comments, if we have any? And then we'll turn it over to our councilmembers. Do we have any speakers in person?
No speakers at this time, Mary.
And no speakers online. All right. I see Councilmember Gordon and then Councilmember Paul Maras.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this presentation. And thank you for letting me know about the south side. That is really important because that has been neglected for many, many, many years. I've been here since 2005 and I've not seen any work get done on that side. So I'm glad to see that we will be visiting that. I do have a question to ask regarding, if we can go back to the slide of the, the cost of, like, for example, you have someone who removes the boats. I wanted to see that.
The safe, safe grant?
Yeah, right, right here. Yes. The A, a PWM08. So my question I have for you, what happens when they move that? Because all of a sudden, out of nowhere, I counted at least eight to nine boats in my district. Just, I mean, you remember, I showed it to our city manager, I mean, city attorney. Remember, we saw the boat on those streets, all those boats?
The abandoned boat removal grant is for removing boats that are in the water.
Right. So I'm saying, maybe you had gotten a warning or something to them because out of nowhere, So I'm saying, maybe you had gotten a warning or something to them, because out of nowhere, boats just started dropping in my district. And I thought we were becoming a Marina or something, because we had so many boats, and mostly along the line of Highway 29, in between those streets, right? So I just wanted to let you know that. I don't know if you had gave a warning, like, if you don't do your tags, something, I don't know.
You mean boats on the road?
Yes, boats on the road. Yes, out of nowhere. And so, and I know that if we can't remove vehicles, I can't imagine our city having the storage space for these huge boats. Sometimes they're not as big, but they're, they're huge. Thank you.
Councilmember Paul Maras and then Matias.
Thank you for your presentation. So when, when did this market study start?
As soon as they, well, our assumption is they've been working on it since they got done with the sedimentation study. I don't have a, an end date. We, I requested that earlier today. If they had an update on it, they said they're still working on it.
When did the sedimentation study start?
They presented it in January of this year.
January of this year. I just, and I'm only asking because I remember I was talking about this when the former ACM was here before, and the conversations about, yeah, there needs to be a market study. So just felt, this feels to me like a long time coming, and it's like mid 2025. Not that it's your fault or anything, just, just wondering, like, you know, should I be worried that this has been kind of lingering for too long? Or has it really just only started to get legs right now?
I can tell you that I'll, that I'll be pushing on them to get this completed.
I appreciate that. And maybe someone can correct me, but Zio Fredo, I, my understanding was that the ownership wasn't going to change, but there was still going to be a restaurant there. Is that no longer correct?
Our underst, our understanding is he's trying to sell it as a restaurant.
Okay.
If nobody buys it, then he's got to remove all the, you know, tables, chairs, everything out, and then, and then we'll be looking for a restaurant.
Okay, so he hasn't found anyone yet to...
Correct.
Okay, are we, I mean, maybe this isn't our lane, but I mean, can we try to help them out, or is there something we do? I just don't want to have just, hey, you figure it out on your own. I mean...
I'm sure we could try to help him out. He's...
I feel like it's more of an economic development question, but I mean...
Yeah, so he's...
There's a pending item that is coming back to the city council relating to this issue. You'll, if you may recall, there was an initial report on this issue.
Yeah.
And then no decision-making, council was looking for additional information, so that'll be coming back to you.
Okay. Well, I, you know, still want to reiterate, I just don't want to leave, leave anyone out to dry, so, okay, thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Matias and then Matulik.
I'm very concerned. I'm just going to be straight up. I'm very concerned because we've been, we've been talking about the Marina for a long time. We talk about study development, you know, let's come up with a plan here, let's come up with a plan there, waterfront, downtown area. We're always planning, we're not executing. And so the dredging is one piece of it, but I think what we need to be having as a council is a conversation around what are the sorts of projects that we should be thinking about implementing to activate that area? What are the partnerships that we could be engaging in that can draw traffic and potential clients once we dredge to that area? I feel like we're in a perpetual state of planning in the city and not spending enough time talking about, like, things that we can potentially try to get things rolling. I was doing a lot of research just specifically on this item, coming into this conversation, and, you know, the process that, and I'm going to give one example, Vero Beach, Florida. They started a process in 2020. They're rolling right now. They had a, you should see their master plan. It was like a stack, and they said, we're going to get funding from the 17 places, we're going to carry out these projects, we're going to partner with these organizations. And I was just like, man, I wish we had something like this. And we was just getting updates on that plan right now. And it just feels like we're so far away from, like, having a plan that we can hold on to, and I think, out of sight, out of mind. I think that's what I think about. Out of sight, out of mind, right? Nobody's asking about it. We're not really bringing it up and having it be a permanent agenda item. And so this just gets back to the burner, and we just keep planning and planning and planning and planning and planning. So I appreciate the update, Oscar. I think it elevates the need for us to really be thinking about how do we set aside dollars to dredge this Marina? And then based on whatever that report tells us, like, what are some of the key decisions that this council needs to make? But from my vantage point, I think we need to have economic development staff be a part of this conversation. We need to have the Marina Advisory Committee be a part of this conversation that has been receiving reports for years, and they've been really frustrated that they haven't really seen action. And I think it needs to start, we need to have an economic development agenda item in our agenda where we talk about these things at least once a month, because otherwise we're not going to get anything done. And, uh, yeah, no, I'm not really sounding positive and uplifting right now, but we've got to put our resources and make stuff happen. Otherwise, we're going to be talking about the same thing in three and a half years. So those are my general comments. I want to see another presentation with the economic development staff and with the Marina Advisory Committee, one. Two, I want specific timelines from that consulting and an update and a presentation from them as soon as possible. I don't think we can go another six months asking these questions. And, and then three, I want to know what are some key decisions that this council needs to make? You know, do we need to make requests from state officials to ask for money? Do we need to make some decisions on possible activation projects? Like, let's get rolling on one of these things. We can't just keep planning.
So if I may, Councilmember Matias, I want to share a slightly different perspective, which is, over the course of the last year and a half, I think the city has actually advanced its Marina efforts, maybe in a quiet behind-the-scenes way, but pretty significantly. The sedimentation study that Foth and Van Dyck completed was the first one that we've done in a long time that really provided us with clear numbers regarding the cost to dredge different components. I don't think we had that information before. I think, you know, from my perspective, the, the Marina, rehabilitation of the Marina would be a very costly endeavor. So, you know, there are a lot of issues surrounding it, including how we might finance it, to think about our financing strategies. We need to know what a revenue stream would be. It's a little, I think, you know, we really need to have a master plan in a way that I don't think we need to have for other types of capital assets, right? We can do our streets where there are, it's such a distributed network, we can do some highest need streets and repave them. But the Marina, I think, really needs to be approached in a holistic fashion, and I think we know a lot more about the condition based on the recent analysis from Foth and Van Dyck than we've known in a long time. And this is a problem that has been created over decades of underinvestment, and so I think it's going to, if the city council decides that it wants to renovate the Marina, is going to take a really significant investment. It might pay for itself if it's done wisely, but I, I would caution everybody about jumping in and doing small things on an ad hoc basis without having some master plan in mind just because it's such an expensive endeavor.
I appreciate that perspective, and I'm going to kind of tell you what I'm thinking right now. On the current trajectory that we're on, you know what's going to happen? Mark the day today. This is going to keep spiraling, right? The costs, people leaving the Marina, all the things. And then we're going to say, it's so expensive to revitalize this Marina, and we don't have the money, and then let's just give it away for peanuts. I'm not doing that, and I don't want us to get to that place. So I think this council needs to be really serious in investing in its Marina, and it needs to hold your team accountable to make sure we're hearing about all these updates, and then we're providing input as we go. Because otherwise, there will be some report, oh, this is going to cost 50 million. And then when we've got to build a police station and invest, what, a billion dollars on roads, then we're going to be like, well, let's just have a developer take care of it. And again, that's the trajectory I feel like we're on right now. Personal opinion, that's my personal opinion.
I understand that concern. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Matulik.
Kind of agreeing with everything that's been talked about, and to the point of, we're always playing behind the eight ball on something like this. I mean, this was brought to our attention when Councilmember Paul Maras and I and the Vice Mayor came in about two years ago about that, number one, we own the Marina, and that we were actually spending money to just minimize the fees that we were paying to, for the, for all the, all the fees that we were being accounted for. So we were never, well, I mean, I, I, this goes to the point of, this is decades and decades of dilapidation of, of not forward-thinking to where, at some point, we need to put our foot down and, and make a decision and, and figure out what do we want to, how do we want to figure this out? Because all we're doing is, is, it's not even putting a Band-Aid on it. We're, we're, we're going to continue to keep bleeding on something like this until we actually have a, to, to the city manager's point, a master plan, a forward vision thing of what are we going to, what is the futuristic thing that we're going to be doing here? Because if we're still going to be, if we're still trying to just do a Band-Aid approach of, of just doing things to pay the, the fees that we're having to pay, we're, we're never going to get out of this hole that, that we're in. And so, I mean, I, I sent out, I shared an email of what Martinez recently did. And it's, obviously, though, we're talking apples and oranges to what they have to what we have, but it's, it's that, we need to have that type of forward-thinking to figure out, how do we, how do we, and, and I'm glad that we have the, the planning department coming up in their next, for the next part, because this ties to the Marina, the planning department, and economic development. This, it's all, in my mind, one kit and caboodle right here. And unless we think of it as a holistic approach, that way, we're, we're, we're going to stay in this dudrum, just like Councilmember Matias said, until we take that, take that, to have the gumption to actually put our foot in the ground and say, we're actually going to take some action and put some investment and do, whether we have to do a public-private partnership with something to, to, we have to look at all the things available in my mind. So, once again, I, we appreciate the update here, but we're, I want to see, I would like to see, think that we're going to be forward-thinking enough to figure out what is that big master plan that we can at least have a vision to look forward to, and then figure out how do we, how do, how can we afford it? Or how do we have to figure out these partnerships to make something like this happen? Because the way we're going about it right now, we're just on a treadmill going nowhere right now with it, and we're still going to be bleeding, bleeding this out and costing in the long run, because without that seawall fix, without the dredging, it's, we're, we're in no man's land at this point. So I'm hoping that we're going to actually get to that forward-thinking point.
All right. Councilmember Paul Maras.
I do appreciate the city manager's point, and I 100% agree with what, everything you're saying. I think there are longstanding problems infrastructure-wise, specifically with regard to the Marina, but also the waterfront, and also the longstanding problems with regard to downtown. But to Councilmember Matias's point, you know, I feel like we could do both things at the same time, at least parallel plans. So, so with Councilmember Matulik talking about a master plan development, I'm not saying I'm, I'm committed to that, but, you know, thinking long-term about the things that we could do. But in the meantime, we could also have, not necessarily a master plan, but at least a, a strategy, a comprehensive strategy as far as how to activate certain places. And those don't necessarily need to be very expensive. They don't necessarily need to be permanent, right? But like, we got to do something now, because I know how long those developments take. They take at least a decade, sometimes decades. And so I, I, I want, I encourage any kind of ideas, any kind of forward-thinking to, you know, see what we could do right now.
One thing, we have been approached by Suntech, one of Marina, and they have four Marinas in Oakland, one in Berriessa, so I don't have a lot of information other than they've reached out to us.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Ledig.
So thank you for your work, and thank you for all your comments. And city manager, Marie, thank you for your comments. And I think what would be nice is, what is the comprehensive plan? What is it that we really need to do? Versus, we're trying to do this, trying to do that. But if we look at the Marina to make it viable, usable, and something that we're caring for, what does that really look like? And I'm sure we can say, oh, we can't afford that, but what does it really look like to get it to a place where it is functioning in the way that it needs to? And then it is really being able to, once we see that, saying, where are we going to start? What can we do year after year? And with that also, being really aggressive and thinking about what kinds of grants are there, and determining how much manpower we're going to really put in to get there. It's hard to see something when it's just piecemealed, and we know that it's expensive, and we have limited funds. But putting it together, the things we need to do, and potentially what resources are available, not just right here within our own framework, but there are grants, there are a lot of things, and yes, they're competitive, but we can begin to think about, from piece to piece, all the things we have to do. Because I want to see the holistic picture. I, I think in big picture. Because all these other things are Band-Aids to me. They're just Band-Aids. They're not getting us where we need to be. Tell me what we need to do to get where we need to be, where we have a real functioning waterfront, where people can dock their boats and do all these things. What does that cost look like? And what are those projects within that cost base?
I, I think that, that the market study needs to tell us that, what, whether it would even pencil out.
Okay. Councilmember Matulik, and then I'll move us.
Thank you. And, and just as, as a simple follow-up, what Mayor Island Company is doing, they give, they're showing a phase plan of what they're, of, of a development scheme over, over time. And this is going to the point of a master plan. I think if you talk about the master plan, and to Councilmember Ledig's point, the master plan is the overall vision and the end. But then you can phase that in, so we can compartmentalize certain areas of it, whether it's the waterfront, whether it's development right off of the waterfront, to where that's the type of vision that I'm hoping between the economic development, planning and, and the Marina, that we're, and the Marina develop, or waterfront commission is, is going to be able to have that type of vision to look, have us looking forward. We don't have to have the whole picture figured out, but to have a forward-thinking vision of that master plan to where we can phase things in incrementally, to where what we can finance and what we can afford at certain increments, that's what, that's what I'm looking forward from a development standpoint. And I think we're past the study portion. The study is just giving us a, a point in time. We need to be, have that forward-looking, forward vision looking of, of what is that end vision of, of what we want, of what we want it to look like ultimately. So, but I, I want to emphasize the phasing portion of it, of what a master plan should be looking like.
I promise, real quick.
I'd see, okay, I see Councilmember Gordon. I really want to move us, because we got our planning staff being really patient.
I wanted to look just like Glencoe's, my, at least South Lale for sure. Because they're already dredging, cleaning, looks beautiful. I want it to look like that.
So I'll just add, I think we've had a, a lot of comments. I'll just add that I am going to continue, you know, I hope we can continue to get these updates, have these discussions. I've certainly been in touch with the city manager, and will continue to be in touch about hustling for dredging funds, and particularly with respect to a regional approach, looking at collaborating with our neighboring cities, perhaps cities across the strait, and working through congressmen's... office to try to get infrastructure funds. So that's still very much on my radar. We're working on that through, in part through STA, and so I'll continue to provide updates and we can continue to stay in touch, and the City Manager and I will continue to stay in touch so that we can, you know, we're not going to be able to find 20, 22 million, but we'll find as much as we can and we'll do as much as we can. So thank you very much. And with that, we will move to our very patient planning staff for our second informational item, which is 9B, which is our update on Planning and Developing Services, Planning and Development Department's permitting process. And we'll do the same thing we did last time, where we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period, thank you. And anyone wishing, there's no one here in person, but anyone online, of course, you're welcome to raise your hand online. I'll kick it over to our Planning Director, Kristen Pollitt, and Planning Manager, Cesar Orozco, for the presentation. We'll take public comment and then we'll do, I'm going to try to keep it to one round of, of council comments, so that we don't keep you too here, here too late into the night.
Okay, last but not least. Good evening, Mayor Source and members of the council. First, I just want to thank you for having us here this evening and having the opportunity to kind of bring this information to you. Let's see, do we have a presentation? Here we go. So, slide, okay, so we will just kind of quickly overview what I'm going to cover. Basically, I want to highlight the existing development review permitting process. And tonight, we're just going to be focusing on the Planning and the Building divisions, because that's kind of where the heart of the permitting is happening. And then we'll also talk about some of the process improvement highlights from the past year. And then we will close out with a high-level overview of some of our long-term process improvement goals. So as you know, the development review process starts in the Planning Division. I gave a copy, there's a hard copy of this, if you guys want to, if it's hard to read on this slide.
And there's a soft copy online as well for members of the public. It, it did get a little garbled on the screen, but there's a nice, clear, soft copy online as well.
Yeah, it's a lot of information on one slide, but it's really like a good snapshot to show the flow of how it all works from start to finish. So I'm going to just kind of try to quickly go through this. Basically, so this is a, a flow chart we have. This is something that was developed by our line staff. It's mostly for internal purposes, but it's something we can share to the public if it's appropriate. Let's see here. So, starting on the far left side, all of our entitlements generally start with some level of preliminary review, whether that is formal or informal, there's definitely some kind of initial connection with applicants on their projects. Following the preliminary review, the official process kicks off when a formal application is filed. So this is where we are with the yellow column. This process usually entails, you know, a couple of rounds usually of review, looking for completeness of applications and also consistency with the code. Each of those reviews has a maximum of 30 days on it, just so you know, to give you an idea of how long that can take. Also, I'm just going to note that most applications require at least two reviews. It's pretty rare to have somebody come in and get it perfectly right the first time. So once a project's deemed complete, then we move over to the sequo process. This can really vary. Some projects are really simple and it's just a matter of identifying a categorical exemption and notating that for the, the project. Or, as you know, other projects may require, you know, up to one or two years of review for a full environmental impact report. Following that sequo step, next we get into the staff analysis. And this is kind of really where we put everything together. So during this phase, you know, all, all the, the work reviewing and sequo has been done, and here we are putting together our staff report or approval letter, whatever it may be. This can take a little bit of time, because we've got it listed at about five weeks here, because there's time required for staff to put it together, review, and then City Attorney review, which is another important piece of that. The, the column four here is Project Decision. So we have a lot of projects that can just be approved at a director level, that still has some publishing, public noticing associated with it before we make that decision. But if it's not director, then it's going to go to a public hearing from one of our hearing body, hearing bodies. And then, once the project is approved, then we move to the, the last column, which is moving into the building permit process. And then I'll just kind of, before we switch sides, I just want to highlight that, you know, obviously, there's a ton of variables associated with these projects. Really, the overall timeframe can be anywhere from like one to two months for something quick and easy to multiple years. So, slide. So, so once the planning review is complete, the next step for a project is to go ahead and file a building permit. This first column here is really where we have the applica, application intake for the building permit. We like to give a couple of days for our building permit technicians to review those submittals. They assess what the, the submittals are, collect the appropriate application fees, and then they route them as appropriate or as needed for the plan check process. So the, the orange column, no, I'm sorry, the yellow column is Plan Review. It says approximately two weeks here, but really, our turnaround time is 22 business days for the first plan check review. Let's see here. So additional rounds of review are then conducted as needed. Additional rounds are usually a lot quicker, usually they're like a 10-day review time is what we typically aim for. Once this process is complete, then we get to the point where we can issue a permit and then the work can actually start. Slide. So, once that permit is issued, there generally is an inspection card that's provided, and then some general guidance about what things or what steps are going to require inspection and sign off along the way. So once the contractor or the builder is actually ready for their inspections, they reach back out to the city, to the plant, I'm sorry, the Building Division to schedule the inspections. And then we will send out an inspector as needed to, to review those projects, and they will identify corrections that are needed. And then this is basically just a cycle that repeats. And then I will highlight that oftentimes, there are changes that happen in the field for various reasons. These column three and column four are kind of optional columns. Sometimes those changes trigger the need for additional, like, plans to be adjusted and re-reviewed. So then we just go through that review process again. So at the end of the process, once all the final inspections are completed, then we get to the, the Certificate of Occupancy, which is the very final sign-off. Basically says you're done with your project. Slide. So now that we've kind of overviewed what the process looks like from start to finish, I just kind of wanted to talk about some of the high-level improvements that we've been kind of working on and making over this past year. One of the big themes that you'll see here is related to staffing. I know we've had these conversations before, but I just want to highlight here in the Planning Division specifically, we've hired five new planners this past year, which is a lot. So we definitely are, are reaping the benefits of having more staff to be able to work on these projects. Because we have more staff, we've actually been able to reduce our email and phone response times. We were at a height of 10-plus days to get back to folks before I came on board last year. We've got that reduced down to 48 hours now, so we're much better at responding. And then along with that, I would say our project review times are, we're seeing some reduction in, in review times too, just because we actually have staff here that's working on them actively. In addition, let's see, we also have kind of revamped our submittal checklist form. We basically put together a, a new layout that has a full matrix of all the things that are required. The goal of this was really to provide more clear and comprehensive direction to our customers at the very start of a project, so that they can hopefully have a more complete submittal. Let's see. Another thing we've also consolidated, this may seem like a small thing, but we've consolidated our internal tracking project numbers to just utilize one project number for ease of reference. This is, I think, important to note, because previously, we were assigning project numbers for every entitlement piece. And sometimes you'll have, you know, maybe two or three at minimum to like eight or nine project numbers associated with one proposal, which can get kind of confusing and cumbersome for an applicant. So we've, you know, reduced that down, and we're hoping that we can utilize that to give better access to our Trackett system online, so that customers can look up a project with just one number and actually see all of the information that's in our Trackett system. We're not quite there yet, but that's something we're working towards. And then you, you know, you know that we cleaned up, we did our Phase 1 of the zoning cleanup that was approved earlier this year, just for fixing some of the errors and inconsistencies. And then the last item here, kind of loosely related, but I wanted to make note that we have put together a new auditing process for the Mills Act contracts. So we actually just sent out letters in July, just recently, to notify all of the existing contract holders that we are starting this process. We're going to actually implement it in January of this coming year. So we want to make sure we put them on notice, but this will help us to better track those contracts and then hopefully kind of reopen that program to new folks who want to apply for Mills Act contracts. Slide. With regard to the Building Division, another recurrent theme, staffing. You know, obviously, we've hired a new Chief Building Official, who I think he actually is on Zoom, so just FYI if you have questions for him later. And then three new inspectors. We also have some noteworthy reductions in response times related to counterweight times, so we've reduced those down a bit. We also have reduced the response time for email and phone from three to four days down to one to two days. I think the, the biggest thing to, to note here is this Plan Review turnaround time. This is a huge improvement in my mind. We've gone from six weeks plus down to the 22 business days. And we've kind of been changing the way we're responding to folks the first time around. You know, we were short-staffed before, so we were kind of pushing them off right away as soon as we saw issues, but now I think we're working to do more custom responses with the first round of review to help people get through that process quicker. And then lastly, we launched Symbian this year for the instant solar permitting, which has also really helped with the workload and turnaround times. And then this slide here is just some of the things that are kind of overlapping between the two divisions. We've been doing some work related to ADU streamlining, so we have new handouts that are more customer-focused. We also have created some better internal practices for tracking the ADU, the ADU applications that we're getting. We have user fee studies that are underway right now for both planning and building fees. And the goal of this is, you know, hopefully to not only increase cost recovery, but also just to be more transparent and accountable with the, the fee information. And then the last thing here is the relocation of the front counter, just moving that back into the lobby, or moving out of the lobby area, back into the department, it's permanent home there. And I just, I wanted to highlight this, because I feel like the move has been much more customer-friendly. And then when we made this move, we also put in the virtual queue system, which has been really helpful at managing the flow of customers coming in. So we're actually moving people through that process in a more orderly and efficient fashion. So it's just, it's working really well right now. Slide. So we're going to wrap this up with, I've got one slide left, just to kind of overview some of our longer-term goals across both of the divisions. Obviously, we're going to continue our recruitment efforts. This is primarily focused in the Building Division. We have a few more key roles that we really need to get filled in that division. And we're also going to continue to refine, refine the organizational chart. We have some changes that hopefully we can get in front of this, in front of the council within the next few months or so, that we have some shifting around that we would like to propose. So hopefully, we'll see that soon. Next up is completing those fee studies that I mentioned. I think that's going to be important. Hopefully, that's in front of you in September as well. Initiating our Phase 2 zoning cleanup work. This is something we haven't really been able to put much time into yet, but it's still high on my priority list. This work will, is intended to focus on cleaning up the procedure section, so it's, it's an important area that we need to fix up. Within the Building Division, we are looking to pursue more instant permitting options. We have an ADU ordinance update that is drafted and is in kind of its final stretch of review with the City Attorney's Office, so we're hoping to be able to bring that forward in the next couple of months. Standard conditions of approval. So this is one that we actually are planning to kind of work with other departments and the other agencies to really improve the standard conditions that we have. I highlight this, because the goal here is to be able to provide more clear and consistent guidelines and steps that are required after entitlement, because a lot of times, we see some confusion after the fact, and then it kind of bogs down the process even further. So it's an important piece. Continue staff training, learning how to draft better findings, again, with the conditions of approval, and then also seeking additional certifications for our building staff, so they can be more efficient. Further evaluating existing software systems for better utilization. We currently are using the Trackett system. That program can do a lot, but I don't think we are using it to the, to the max right now. So I think that there's a lot more we could do with it, but we're, we're not there yet. So we're hoping to kind of keep evaluating that. And then lastly here, we also are working on updating checklists in the Building Division. Those will come forward with the 2025 Building Code update later this year. So that is it. Tried to go through it quickly. But I wanted to just mention, oh, we, you know, we didn't talk about code enforcement tonight, but I'm more than willing to come back and do a separate presentation on that if you have questions or want to dig into that. And then again, I'm available, we have Sistar here and Bill Collins is on Zoom if there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So what I'll do is, we'll see if we have any commenters. I don't, I can't imagine we have any in the room, so do we have any online?
Thank you, Mary. Yes, we do have two speakers online.
All right, let's call them.
Ann C., please entice yourself, go ahead.
Hi, you guys, Ann Carr here. I have three things on my mind. First of all, I do want to say congratulations on the hires and filling different positions and getting the response times faster. That's a significant achievement. With respect to the work going forward, three things on my mind. One is about the fee studies going on. The last large project that was done on this that I know about, the city had specifically been asked to look at its fees and compare them to neighboring areas, and were we competitive? Or were our fees a lot higher than neighboring cities, which is what people had been hearing and experiencing? That information was collected, but not presented to the public. And normally, I don't name names, but this was Will Morat's decision at the time, and he said that the city didn't want to confuse the public. So they completely left out the thing that had, people had been requesting, which was, where do our fees stand with respect to other cities? I think that's really essential. And with respect to the, quote, "cost recovery," when I hear that, I keep thinking, okay, well, if you guys are being paid for your normal staff hours and you're doing cost recovery for any work against that, why wouldn't you just outsource the whole thing to begin with? Because otherwise, the people who are paying the fees are paying twice, you're paying a staff fee and then you're paying additional. So I'm skeptical about the cost recovery aspect, and I really do think that our fees need to be competitive with neighboring cities. Regarding the zoning updates, I have information about the most recent cleanup of, of zoning and approvals, where some things were raised through without proper notification, noticing and documentation. I can take that up with the City Manager and the Planning Department separately, it's a long discussion. And then the last, the third thing on my mind is, I would like to see And then, um, the last, the third thing on my mind is I would like to see better and more consistent noticing to the community. Right now we do a minimum of, you know, 100 feet, 200 feet, 500 feet to building owners. And yet we have such a high number of renters in the city that people often who are going to be living close to a project aren't notified about it because they're a renter and not an owner. So it really, I think our process needs to take into account residents and not necessarily just owners. Cause we have so many absentee landlords that don't care and don't follow, whereas the residents who live here do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you said we had another speaker?
Uh, final speaker, Melvin Cohen. Please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff. Uh, my name is Melvin Cowan. I'm a local developer and advocate, leading efforts to bring dignified housing and services to Vallejo and across Solano County. I appreciate Ann's, uh, Ann Carr's comments about the cost recovery process, uh, and the double charging. I think that definitely needs to be addressed. So I appreciate that. I want to begin by recognizing the real progress made within the planning and development services department, reducing phone response times from 10 days to under 48 hours, cutting plan review turnaround from over six weeks to 22 business days and implementing clearer submittal checklist. These are meaningful improvements and I want to thank the staff who made them happen. Uh, these upgrades aren't just technical, they're equity tools for far too long delays and inconsistencies in the permitting process have disproportionately impacted by POC-led development teams, smaller firms and community rooted initiatives like mine. When we stream these systems, we don't just move paper, we move possibilities for families, service providers and neighborhoods that have waited too long, uh, for investment. And said that, having said that, I want to uplift a critical and timely policy now in effect, which is the Senate Bill 423. Uh, SB 423 requires that jurisdictions not meeting their state housing goals like Vallejo, uh, must streamline qualifying affordable and mixed income housing projects. That includes supportive housing. These projects are now eligible for by right approval and are exempt from CECL under state law. This matters because the question now is not whether Vallejo wants to support housing, but whether its systems will align with state and moral urgency. Uh, we're already seeing state and philanthropic dollars leaving cities that can't execute. Vallejo can't afford to be one of them. So tonight I respectfully encourage this council to ensure SB 423 is not only acknowledged, but actively implemented across departments. The staff are trained to expedite SB 423 eligible projects without unnecessary delay and that the city builds on its permitting improvements with equity centered tools like public dashboards, pre-CECL consultations and clear accountability metrics. Uh, when we pair operational efficiency with policy alignment, we build more than housing. We, we rebuild trust and that is how Vallejo becomes a place where every resident and every builder committed to serving them can truly belong. And thank you for this and I appreciate the updates.
All right, thank you. Is that it for our speakers online?
That wraps our speakers, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go, I'm going to ask us to do one round each, cause we'll have many more times to engage with planning. And we'll start with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you so very much. I am so proud of you all for doing a lot of great changes because I do agree that the wait time has been really improved. I'm just excited about that. I do have a, a concern. One of the things I got a lot of feedback on is, um, uh, that you, you paid the fee, step four, and maybe we are lost, we're losing the, the step five. There seems like it should be the other way around. Because what happens with a lot of people are saying, uh, I'll give examples, someone wanted to get bill, um, open a business here downtown, they did all of the hard work and then they paid the fees and all of a sudden they didn't get the certificate to open. There was some kind of issues that happened that they thought was already taken care of. They already did an inspection, plan review, and then it, the final inspection. But this is unfortunately, I'm hearing this more than, of course, as elected, but when I was a, a community advocate, I heard it there as well, but more so now with more details that it seemed like it should be the other way around because now the, it didn't go right. Now you gotta give back the money or, or how does that work? So maybe you can explain to me, why is it set up this way instead of versus the other way around? Once I pay the fees, I'm excited, I'm getting ready to do my celebration, which one, this particular situation that happened. And then when they didn't get their certificate, they were out and they were done and they were frustrated. And by the way, two businesses, which you probably already know if I'm speaking to you, went to Benicia. And not, not a lot of frustration. So maybe you can help explain, why is it set up this way?
Um, maybe, um, I don't, I don't know if there are specific ones, maybe we can talk offline about to like dig into the specifics of what happened to there. Um, but I think the, the one thing that I want to just mention is, um, payment of fees is required as a condition in like a final occupancy. So you can't get that final unless all the fees have been paid. Um, it's, it's usually, you know, just something that needs to be done beforehand. So, um, I'm not sure if that helps at all. I, I assume you're talking about the, the last pieces?
Yeah, that, that last piece, because, okay, so you say you obtained the final inspection approval. What's the expression, final expression needs to, uh, final expression, uh, inspection need to be? And then it says a schedule of final building inspection. And then it, I mean, and it's like you did five one, now five two, and then congratulations, and now you got your certificate of occupancy. And then if, uh, one more thing right here, it says available for normal fees upon request. So, and I think that was another, I think this one in particular, that lower, that one right there, happens to be this one particular person who ended up going to Benicia. But, and, and it was more than what they anticipated. So I don't know what that's about, but I was just wondering why not the other way around? Yes, I know they have to pay the fees.
Well, the, the sequencing-
But you kind of explained a little bit, but yeah.
Sorry. The, the sequencing of the whole process is really set up to, to build, like each step builds on the next step. So once you get through the plan review process, you should have a plan to construct that's pretty solid and, and should get you to the finish line. And then once you start building, the inspections are there as kind of checkpoints to make sure that there's no issues that are coming up that weren't expected. And, um, you know, if something does come up, then we have a process in place to kind of figure out how to work people through it. So, um, like I said, they're, they kind of are intended to, to build upon each other so that there is certainty once you get to that, the end of the process. Um, it's very unusual to get to the end and not be able to get a certificate of occupancy unless you run into something that required an improvement, that cost, um, you know, an absorbent amount of money that you weren't, um, prepared for, like something totally unexpected. And then I don't know, um, if you're looking at the, um, I don't know if that helps to answer, um, maybe if you could clarify if you're looking at the, the permit chart or the inspection chart, um, we do have the building inspector, I'm sorry, the building official online to maybe provide further clarification?
Okay, that'd be fine. So, um, I'm looking at number five. That's what I'm looking at. And I'm looking at how you have the five one, the five two. And then congratulations, but then it's like underneath there, it's an official affirmative certificate occupancy. And then it says, uh, available for normal fees upon request.
That's just if you want a special one, an official one printed out.
Okay, that, that's different.
Yeah, that's just something minor.
But, yeah, but that's why I was just wondering, because it seems like, I, I get that there might be, I appreciate you clarifying that. But if something happens after, during the fees that people are not feeling like we want them here and they feel like, didn't really want to say that, but it seemed like they do all the work, they did everything they're supposed to do, but guess what? We're going to catch you at the end. And I know that's not us, and maybe other cities, but I'm not saying that's us. But it, some people feel that they're targeted, that they don't get to open a business, depends on who they are and what they're trying to open up in downtown area. And they leave us and go to other cities and they don't have half of the struggles that we have here. And also the cost is really overwhelming to a lot of people. So I, I just wanted to understand that part. And then I was wondering, how come the fees is not included in here? Like how much you do charge? Is that because it's a whole, it depends on what it is maybe?
Um, well, just to reiterate, this is an internal document and fees change every year with the master fee schedule. So, um, we try not to include them here because we don't want there to be confusion if there's a change in another place. There's, there's really one source for the fees.
And also to add, like specifically for planning entitlements, uh, fees are set depending on the title that's being requested. And if we're looking at building permit fees, those are, it all depends on what the request is. Um, there are some fees, for example, changing a water heater, that's a flat fee. But if you're building a brand new custom home, brand new custom home from the ground up, that's based on the value. And depending on what the overall value is of that home, it will depend what the building permit fees would be.
Thank you so much. And then the last one I have is, uh, regarding the, with the caller and both of the callers pointed out was the, um, uh, the cost recovery. Can you explain what that is, uh, to someone who's a layperson? What does that mean and why is that a big issue? My, that's my last one. Thank you.
Um, I, I think we'll be more prepared to go into that in detail when we bring the fee study forward. But, um, generally the, the way it works is that, um, when we do a fee study, we look at the actual hours it takes to complete the project. So we get an estimate of, you know, if we were to pay, you know, the full amount for that staff person to process it, this is what it would look like. And then we set an amount for the fee that's, you know, probably less than that amount. So, um, currently a lot of our fees, particularly in the planning division are pretty low. They're at maybe like a, you know, 20 to 30% cost recovery. Um, so, um, I'm, I'm not sure, the question about double dipping, I don't really know where that comes into play, but right now we're only collecting a small portion, um, compared to what it actually costs to do the work.
If, if I may, just based on what I heard from the comments, um, that were made, there seems to be, um, an impression that, um, city staff are getting paid through some mechanism like the general fund, but then the city is charging fees to recover additional or generate additional revenue. Um, for a department like Planning Development Services, much of the staff salaries are being paid out of those fees. So they're not getting paid through the general fund and then the city is, we're not charging them for the applicants for that and charging them an additional fee. We're just attempting to charge up to an amount that generates the fees necessary to support the work of the staff that's working on that. So there isn't, something about the comments suggests that maybe they thought there was some double dipping, which is not the case. And as Director Pullet mentioned, and I think is revealed in the current fee study, our cost recovery rates are in some instances quite low, whereas I think the city has a cost recovery policy that says we aspire to collect fees that cover our costs in providing those services. So in the public sector, we usually group services into services that benefit the general public and all of us collectively, and services that primarily benefit individuals. And development projects, including things like renovations to one's own home, are considered services that benefit that individual homeowner. And so the concept is, we think that homeowner who's going to be the beneficiary of those improvements should pay for that expense. It shouldn't be spread out using the general fund to be billed to all residents. That said, some cities, you know, make a affirmative decision to subsidize certain fees. We often don't charge 100% cost recovery, but that's a policy of a lot of city councils. And so that'll be something for you all to consider when the fee study comes back and the city council needs to make a decision about what cost recovery levels we want for different, uh, services.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you for answering.
Uh, Councilmember Paul Mares.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I just want to commend you both on doing a really great job of turning around this department. Uh, I've been here for two and a half years and before that was in the planning commission. So I remember some really dark times. Um, and I requested this item, um, I don't remember when I asked for it, but I, I know I requested this item. Uh, and I had every intent of providing guidance, a litany of guidance. And honestly, there's not a whole lot for me to provide. I mean, you just, you're, you're hitting all the things that I've been wanting to push for, for some time. And frankly, this is a long time coming because, uh, there's this old narrative that's still persistent that, uh, Vallejo is an unfriendly place for commercial projects and residential projects. Um, and we have to do a better job of communicating all these reforms that are happening. That, that's really making a difference and I don't want that to continue on because perception is reality. Um, but the checklist, the full matrix, that's, uh, transference, uh, transparent, uh, the new planners that we have, uh, what you're doing with the, regards to the Mills Act, uh, that's going to be really felt in St. Vincent's Hill. Um, but I do have some critiques, uh, just, you know, friendly critiques, just to, you know, keep the ball rolling. Um, if, if this hasn't already been planned already, but maybe having, um, uh, a workshop with the business community and also contractors and gaining their feedback on what, uh, we could do better. Um, and in particular, looking into the, um, user interface, um, with, whether it's ETracket or whatever, uh, or even just the, the City Vallejo website, you know, work with IT and figure out like, what is the, the easiest way to make it simple or not? The, the, the most user interface friendly way for all the builders, for all the contractors, uh, who use it. Cause an old complaint was that they can't figure out where to go. Um, but, uh, maybe things have gotten better. Um, under the building division permit plan check, uh, the second step for routing, um, and a product plan, I don't know if this has been fixed already, was they would get all these, um, um, the, the feedback from fire, water and so on and so forth, but like at different times. Um, has that been cleaned up?
Um, yeah, actually, um, it's, it's funny that you bring that up because when, ooh, when I was doing some research to find out, you know, what we had in our files related to these flow charts, um, I actually found a sheet that we had that has response times for each of the different, um, departments. Um, and I was able to kind of, I didn't share it with you tonight because it's outdated, but, but we have, um, like average response times for everybody who's reviewing. So this is something, um, I've got, uh, Bill Collins is here and he can, um, uh, give more information, but we're looking to circulate that and revisit this and kind of remind everyone what those response times should be. Bill, do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to mention that we're sending out a combined plan check letter. Uh, generally what happens is, uh, we route the plans to all the different departments. Uh, when the review comes back, building is the last review, so we can get all the comments generated together. And we send a letter out to the applicant that all the comments are in ETracket for them to come in and grab all the stuff. Uh, generally what we do is we make them viewable on ETracket as soon as we get them back from different departments. That way, uh, our, our bigger contractors usually like to start working on some of the, uh, comments as soon as they start coming in and it helps them out a little bit. Uh, but we do send a complete, uh, here's your comments, uh, as soon as all those, all the, uh, reviews come back, the combined reviews are, uh, completed.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, I guess we'll talk about the, the fee study some other time. And the last thing is, and this is just, um, I encourage you to look into this, uh, with regard to infill, you know, maybe consider what, however we can to streamline that process. Uh, I, I'm even daring to go as far as certain, um, project types like duplexes and triplexes, uh, could be pre-approved, you know? If, if we have some objective standards, we could look into. I mean, this is something you could, should bring to the planning commission. Um, but anything to make it really easy. I know Berkeley, City Berkeley has done something, uh, recently with regard to streamlining the process, uh, for missing middle house, housing, but gain that density for different types of housing and also, um, uh, streamline the infill process will be, uh, a really great accomplishment. I don't know if you have any comments on that so far, but, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thanks. Councilmember Matias.
All right, thanks. Councilmember Matias.
Thank you, Director. Not to beat a dead horse here, but I also want to just commend you and your group for a job well done. You guys are on it, you're moving fast, and you're making stuff happen. And that's very important for us. So I just have a couple of quick questions. One, that big project that the old Walmart site on Sonoma, what is going on? Because there's been, there's like a pile of material that's just been sitting there. And I'm sure at this point it's blown back to my house, and I live on the eastern side. Like, I'm being sarcastic, but why are we sitting on what is a huge project? I think there's 400 rental units. And I'm sorry that I'm being this specific, but that's a really important project for us. So I just wanted to get an update.
Yeah, just to provide an update from what I received from the developer was that they have made some changes in their overall development. They got rid of the developer that was originally going to move forward and build it because there was a shortfall of funds from other projects. So they're consolidating their team. They recently requested a complete estimate on fees for everything, including building permits, fire inspections, public works, and below flood and wastewater. And what they're doing now is they're getting their construction drawings together and they're hoping to submit to the city in the next two weeks, hoping to start construction in May 2026, right after the rainy season. So that project is still, as of now, is still moving forward.
Okay, so on that point, I don't know the process by which, Director, you're sort of setting priorities as to what projects need to be tackled for your department. But one of the things that I found interesting was like, you've got all this activity happening on Sonoma Boulevard, all these different permits that are being drawn. And then there are some plans that are being prioritized over the update to the Sonoma Boulevard plan. So I saw on the value list or on some of the other schedules you have on your website that I think Hector's the one who's got, who's been assigned to update the Sonoma Boulevard plan. And so it's like, I kind of feel like that should be happening now, especially considering, I know you got a lot going on. But considering that there's so much activity happening on that corridor, we've got Caltrans doing the repavement project, Chick-fil-A, La Quinta, all this other stuff going on. Like, we should have a parallel process so that, you know, that helps inform whatever's left of that, of developing that corridor into the future. So it's just something for you to think about. You know, I don't know where we are with Mare Island, but does it make sense to be devoting a boatload of resourcing into Mare Island if we've got stuff on the hopper someplace else that can generate value for the city? So these are management and perhaps strategic questions that we should be thinking about. And so I don't know if there's any comment you want to make to that, but I just found that curious.
Yeah, the only thing that I think is worth noting is that those other specific plans that are picking up speed right now are either grant funded or developer driven. So the waterfront in the downtown, obviously, we have a huge, you know, 2.4 million, I think, total in funding from MTC to do those projects. So that's why we're trying to get the ball rolling on that, so we can utilize those funds. And then the Mare Island specific plan, we actually have recently brought environmental consultants on board to get started with that. That project, again, is developer initiated, so we are processing that. I agree with you, Sonoma Boulevard is a high priority. We've got one person in long range right now trying to handle a wide, a huge backlog of projects. But I'll take note of that and see if there's ways that we can try to bump that up in priority.
Thank you for that. And then Councilmember Palmaras sort of spoke to this. And I know you guys are in the weeds, but communication, communication, communication. We can have all these flow charts and you could be making all the process improvements in the world. But if it's not online, if we're not telling a story, you know, on our social media, on different publications around how we're streamlining our processes, then like, that perception's not going to change. And I know that's not on you, but I would really have the city manager's office kind of think about how to deploy our communications assets to really speak to the work that you and your team are doing so that we can get some more activity in the pipeline.
I think that's a great project, I mean, a great comment. And I'll just add, I kind of feel like we've been so busy working on all these updates that we haven't taken that extra step to communicate out the progress. But I think it's a good comment, we're definitely, but we'll be working with the public engagement team to see what we can do.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Councilmember Matulik.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your team. And congratulations on the upgrades, especially from a staffing standpoint, I think. Because we talk about how we're, as a city, of having challenges with staffing. It seems like your department has been overcoming, at least recently, some of the staffing challenges. So whatever you're doing, hopefully you can spread that within the rest of the other departments and see if they can implement some of the techniques you're using. Just out of curiosity, from a data standpoint, do you have any data on any first-time applicants? For, from planning to building to, do you keep that type of data?
When you say first-time applicants, what, can you elaborate?
In other words, is this their first time applying for, is it like a mom and pop doing a renovation on their home? Or is it a new commercial? Or is it a new developer coming in there? Do you keep that type of data as part of your resource?
I don't think we have it set up that way. You know, we track information on who all of our applicants are. So I'm sure it's kind of in the system somehow, but no, that's not something we've been tracking.
And to kind of, to Councilmember Matias's question of the project in my district on where the old Walmart is, how many projects, do you have data on projects that have gotten the permits but haven't been able to move forward for financing issues?
I'll start. We do have the value list, which we have been doing pretty good about updating on a quarterly basis. So the value list has, you know, that list of all of the projects that are approved and kind of where they're at in the process. Those details about ones that may be held up for financing, that's kind of more of the minutia. That's probably more just what our staff knows in conversation with folks. So we don't really have a list or that, of that information kind of compiled.
And those of us in the profession, we understand that that comes more down to the construction costs, the, how that's been increasing incrementally lately. So that's where I'm trying to understand if, is there, the reason I ask these questions is because this is a kind of the collaboration that Councilmember Matias and I have been having about trying to get planning and economic development to maybe have these conversations of identifying where can we both move forward in parallel paths of helping both, both departments moving forward from an economic standpoint and also from a planning standpoint. Are there ways that they can collaborate to identify of moving a lot of the balls for that, that you both, the similar goals that you both have of getting projects and getting the economic development moving forward in the city? So this is where I'm trying to kind of start that ball rolling with Councilmember Matias's team. And I think there are some ideas, potential to have that, those conversations. And until we can get these, both these, the planning commission and Economic Development Commission together, I think that'll be worth exploring more. But this is where, once again, forward thinking of how do we identify to move the city as a whole forward for that. So, but once again, great work, especially to Councilmember Palmaras. We've been on the planning commission when we've been there for the struggles. And in the past two years, you've done a great job of bringing it to where it's at right now. So congratulations on that.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just add one response too. I know that some cities have specific staff in their economic development department that are assigned to kind of help be like, almost like a concierge for a lot of new, high-profile projects. And then usually that person can kind of help track those things and understand if there's, you know, concerns or potential roadblocks that might come up and kind of help work through them. So, you know, maybe that's a long-term goal that we can work with ED to kind of collaborate on so that we can help provide a better path for.
Because part of that, the forward-thinking part of it is looking at specific plans in particular is where the economic development can identify. Is it commercial? Does it need to be rezoned? Or can it be those type of conversations that we can have that? And so that's where we're, once again, looking, hoping to see that forward thinking to kind of be more proactive versus reactive.
Yeah, totally agree.
All right, well, I'll say thank you. Everything's kind of already been said. We had, Vallejo had the privilege of hosting the California Planning Roundtable over the weekend. And so I got to chat with our planning director a little bit about the progress that we've made and the fact that, you know, when you have a reputation, as has been mentioned, it, the realization of the community that things are getting better tends to lag the actual change. And I think we're finally getting to that point where people are realizing that the processes are improving. And we had a great conversation about how do we communicate, how do we work together to communicate those things out to the public? So they realize, you know, going from 10 days, okay, yeah, 10 days is a little embarrassing, but going from 10 days to 48 hours in like eight months is a feat. And we should celebrate that and push that out and let folks know like, look, you can get a building permit in 22 days in this city right now, in 22 business days. That's a big deal because that's not what it was before. So, yeah, thank you all for the work you're doing. Just let, you know, from my position and probably this whole body, let us know how we can help, you know, kind of amplify and push that out. And, you know, we'll be having many more conversations because there's a ton of stuff in the pipe. So thank you very much. All right, with that, city manager, you have something to add? Or you're going for your report?
Just ready to move on from my report.
I like the readiness. We will move to item 10, which is the city manager's report. Go right ahead.
Great, thank you. Just a few things. As you know, we had been expecting that the Board of Supervisors might take action today on the sheriff's contract. That wasn't on today's agenda. So we have, and I don't think at the staff level, we've received any official notification or explanation as to why that wasn't agendized for discussion day. I've reached out to my counterpart, the city, sorry, the county administrator to get an update on that. And I will share what I learned from that discussion. As you know, the city has been looking for a consultant to help us develop a new unhoused strategic plan. Staff has identified a consultant that we will be recommending for the city council's approval. And that will be an item on a September council meeting agenda. As you know, we brought in a consulting firm, MRG, to look at some of the challenges that the Broadway project experienced. They, MRG provided some recommendations about how we can better position our affordable housing program and policies and procedures to more effectively undertake programs in the future, projects in the future. We issued an RFP last week to find a consultant to help us develop that Affordable Housing Guidebook and to be an on-call service provider to serve as an affordable housing operator. We have completed our public and customer engagement process regarding City Hall open hours. So we did a very broad outreach to the community to get their input on City Hall open hours. We also reached out directly to all of the customers of our two main departments that operate out of City Hall. That's finance for the water billing and the Planning and Development Services. They both sent email notifications to their client lists to get input. So we have that input and we are going to be rolling out our new open hours in September or October. And I'll have more information to share with the city council on that. And finally, city crews, with the assistance of a vendor, continue to work on pest abatement projects and efforts in downtown and at the waterfront. And we're hearing from community members that progress is being made. So we'll be continuing that and continuing to report out on the progress there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll bring us to the city attorney's report.
Thank you. The quarterly report for our department is in your packet. I won't go over it in any detail. Just to let you know, we do have some new cases for the, this quarter of the year. And this is the fourth quarter, so it's April through June of 2025. You can see them there in front of you, seven of them. During the same time period, we've resolved five other cases and those are in front of you as well. We have a total active cases of 56, 44 and 13 for NLP. That's how they break out. Funds recovered during this time period are $87,000 and change. Funds recovered for the entirety of the fiscal year through this quarter are just under $600,000. And the breakdown of those funds recovered and what types of cases they were recovered from is contained in the report. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. All right, we have a new item on here, which is request and action for future agenda items or special projects. Does anyone have anything they want to bring up here? All right, Councilmember Gordon.
One, I wanted to clarify something that was sent out to my colleagues. And I want to make sure that this was clear regarding, I don't want to mention her name. I didn't get permission to do so. But there was someone that needed assistance that I happened to see at I Heart. And I had been receiving lots of letters regarding this concern. And I sent it to our city manager and the team as well.
Do you mind if I quickly clarify, we have a new item for future, is this a request for a future agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, I apologize.
That's okay. We'll come right to you.
I apologize. Please forgive me. Thank you.
We added a new item. Anyone have anything they want to add for a request? Councilmember Paul Maras.
I was confused too. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Matias and I, we are both requesting an activation plan for downtown, the waterfront and the marina. And just to clarify, this isn't like a redundant specific plan, but specifically talking about activation. And I know we have an economic development strategy, but I think a plan that's very specifically tailored for these locations and really gets into the details of what needs to happen should be included as part of this plan. So that's our request. Thank you.
All right, and Councilmember Gordon.
Yes, I would like to ask us if we can, for future plans, to come up with an idea to illuminate businesses in the inland part of Vallejo as well. Do a campaign that, you know, revisit to celebrate Vallejo. Because there's a lot of great things happening in Vallejo. So I wanted to see if we can look into doing something in that nature, something to celebrate Vallejo and all of its wonderful glory that we do have that's moving forward. Thank you.
All right.
Do you need clarification on that? Is that clear?
I'm actually going to turn to the city manager and ask for clarification on what our process is with these requests.
We got it right here. Yep, sure. So as you will recall, at the council meeting of July 22, the city council looked at some pending requests for future agenda items and also had a discussion about the agenda-setting process. And what council directed at that meeting was a modification to what we had called our two-step process that was really a three-step process for adding something to the agenda and has approved now truly a two-step process. And that two-step process is during this new agenda subheading, request and action for future agenda items, council members can request a future agenda item or a special project. During that item at that council meeting, the city council will vote to direct staff to scope that item or not. And then staff will return at a subsequent council meeting with the scope, the resources that are needed there. And council can provide direction on whether staff implements it. So it's two steps. We're using a new form that the city clerk created and distributed. So that is our new process. At a meeting under the subheading, a council member requests a future agenda item or a special project. Your colleagues, all of you, vote whether or not to direct staff to move forward to scope that. It comes back at a future meeting for you all, a decision on whether or not to implement that project as scoped. That's the new, the new process.
Well, I'm kind of confused because what is the point of number 12? So this is, number 12 will help us get this done? And this is, is this a sample? Because it's already.
So that's how, what we do under step 12 is you all suggest the future agenda items or special projects you want, which two of you have done this evening. You will take a vote this evening about whether or not staff will return with a. You will take a vote this evening about whether or not staff will return with a, what we call a scope, which is a kind of the list of tasks that would entail, the list of staff hours or other resources that would be required. And upon that, you all decide whether to direct staff to implement those projects.
Thank you so much.
So, we would then be voting on both of those right now? The activation plan? And when does the form come into play?
Your, the clerk has requested that council members complete that form in advance of making this request to help everybody to really crystallize that request, but if necessary, it can be filled out after the fact.
That makes sense. Okay, that makes sense. Council, we are.
Your vote, yes.
But I'm going to go first, Councilmember Lettigie.
Thank you. So, just really quick, and this probably doesn't fit in here, but it really is related. We're adding new requests, and I really want to know what happens, what happened to all the other requests? We had a long discussion about that. And how are we going to track all these requests so that we're adding, we're literally going to vote on to bring these forward? Where's the list that shows where we are and what is still outstanding and needs to come back to this council? Because there is a long list of things that have not been brought back here.
Yes, so the council provided some direction at the meeting of July 22nd. I think it provided direction to bring back scopes for four different projects, special projects, all of which were related to legislation that the city attorney's office is going to be working on. So, the scopes for those will be returned at the next regular council meeting. The council provided direction to create an online directory of all of the requests for future agenda items and special projects that this council has approved. And so, the city clerk, I, and IT have been working on creating that online tracking tool. The idea was that the city council, at its goal-setting special meeting, which will be on Tuesday, September 2nd, I believe is the date, is going to be looking at those requests, particularly the special projects, as well as all of the requests that this current council inherited, which number something like 30, and making decisions about which of those are going to move forward on what timeframe and which of those are going to be put in the parking lot. Staff doesn't have the capacity to work on that backlog of 30 and all of the new ones, so you all will need to decide how to prioritize those at the goal-setting meeting.
So, with that in mind, then, can we take these two that just came in and put them in that hopper for goals, for the goal-setting prioritization? Because it feels, to Councilmember Lettigie's point, it feels weird to vote on these two with an incomplete list, and then we're going to come to goal-setting. It feels like we should do it all at once.
All you would be voting on tonight is whether or not you want us to come back with information about the resource requirements to implement these two efforts. That's what the scoping process is.
And that would put these two at the same stage of the list as everything else.
Put them at the same stage as all the other ones.
I'm okay with that, because that way then we just decide on the second. Can I ask for a, along those lines? So, I had requested an update on Sperry Mill, and I don't know where that went. I don't know if on the 22nd that was rejected or if that still needs to come back. I do think we should consider an update on Sperry Mill. I think that's a big enough and more important enough project. So, I want to reiterate that. If everybody voted it down in my absence, that's fine. We can communicate that, but I would like to re-request that.
Mayor, it is still on that list of items that this council has requested from January into now.
Right.
But the council, as I recall, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, this council only took the four immediate items they directed staff to come back in September with scopes on. They only, there were only four that were directly related to public safety, and the others are still on the list, kind of waiting for your discussion.
So, those haven't been voted on, and then the, so we would be voting on these but not voting on those? I just want to, I'm just trying to understand this process.
Every, everything that has been requested as a future agenda item or special project goes into the hopper that the city council will be considering at the goal-setting session, including Sperry Mills, if that was, I don't recall that off the top of my head as an item, but if Dawn is saying that that's on the list, then that's on the list as well.
Okay, I don't, I mean, I don't mind go ahead, going ahead and moving through, moving these two through, if we can also move Sperry Mill through and whatever else is lingering so we don't lose something in the process.
It's not going to be lost in the process, it's still on the list of council requests.
Yeah, and we haven't seen that list. Councilmember Lettigie.
So, when will the list go online?
Pardon?
When will the list go online? Assistant to the city manager Natalie Peterson and I are working on that. We've, we've kind of had a couple of demos we shared with the city manager. We've got Mr. Murray's input, and we will be working on it next week and this, the week and next week. We hope to have it up as soon as possible because I did hear your request, I heard the entire council's request, along with your frustration, and we will get that up there as soon as possible.
Councilmember Mathias.
So, at the last meeting, I know we took a vote to have city staff prioritize those four public safety items. And so, just so I can remember, we gave direction on those four items. When do you guys expect to bring the four items to us?
The scoping for those four items, we expect to bring to you in September, when you reconvene in September.
So, I guess this kind of gets back to the mayor's question, like, should, aren't we really then also scoping the rest of the 30-something items that are on there? Because I thought we were sort of directing you guys, like, okay, work on these four things, and then bring them back to us for consideration, not scope them out when we also got to scope out 30 other items. Like, I thought it was, I thought we were prioritizing those four to move forward, and then at the conclusion of those four items, we were going to look at the rest of the list and say, okay, go through the rest of these.
You were, but ultimately, in terms of, we are not going to be able to bring forward four ordinances and all of the study relating to those four ordinances all at once. So, the question was, here's about how much time each of them will take, what they will look like, getting some direction from the council about, do you want community outreach? Do you want a specific process for those? And understanding exactly what the expectation is and in what order you want to see them, and then we will go do that work, assuming it gets the votes to do that.
So, is it fair to assume that, given that we've given direction on those four, any of the other 31s, you're probably looking at 2026 at this point?
Oh, I can't say that because I don't know what they are, what, without seeing the 26 in front of me, I can't possibly know that.
Right, because they, different departments are going to be responsible for delivering different requests, so, you know, the, those four might, you know, consume the city attorney's office's resources through the end of this calendar year. But something like Councilmember Gordon's request for a program to recognize and celebrate Vallejo probably doesn't involve the city attorney's office very much, so other departments might be able to take that on. All of the pending items that had been approved by the prior council have already been scoped. So, the number of items that need to be scoped from this council are relatively small, and the quote, "scoping" of an item which is simply a future agenda item kind of presentation on something is really straightforward. It's going to take staff six hours to put together a presentation on the topic that you're interested in. So, I think we'll have the scoping done. I guess a question for the city attorney's consideration, we'll have all those scopes for all the other things in time for the goal-setting meeting on September 2nd. I guess a question would be whether the city attorney's office could create the scopes for those four items on that same timeframe, so the city council has the scopes for all of those things for that special meeting.
Yeah, that's only a week earlier, so I think we can probably do that. It's a month away, so, or pretty close to a month away, so I don't see why not.
Okay, so all the council member requests for future agenda items or special projects will be scoped. You'll have that for all of them at that special meeting for goal-setting.
But not the stuff on the list that we don't know about that didn't get voted on last time, and then we have to vote on these two things now to decide if they get scoped for the second? Or can we just put, can we just bring it all on the second?
We can bring it all on the second.
Let's bring it all on the second.
Including if you, whatever you vote on tonight.
I would like to move right now that we just move everything that's currently in step one of the process to step two of the process, and we look at it all on the second. Let's just do that, because I feel like we're spinning, and this is going to get us there. Can we vote on that? Forms are coming in, so. I don't know that it's that urgent, guys.
So, that I'm clear, when you say everything on the list, you're talking about everything from the prior council to?
Everything from the prior council on that old list has already been through step two. I'm talking about things that are currently in step one, the two things that were just proposed that we're supposed to vote on tonight, and whatever else nebulous is flowing, floating out there that we've already said step one, that we would need to vote right now to put to step two. Let's just move it all to step two and deal with it all in the second, which is not going to be that many items. I think it's going to be like four items, frankly.
I think I'm, if I may, Mayor, I think the thing that I'm struggling with was, like, we just had a six-hour conversation on this two weeks ago, and then, I mean, it was a really long conversation, and we got to a place where we said, let's prioritize these four items. They all centered around public safety, which is our number one priority for the year. Let's try to get these things across the finish line over the next like couple of months. What you're proposing is a re-evaluation and like a rejiggering of a whole six-hour conversation we had two weeks ago, and that's not what we agreed on. This feels very different, like, very different.
If, if what the council did two weeks ago was set goals for the upcoming year and decide this is all we're ever going to do, then we should cut this item and not request any other future items until all four of those ordinances are done. I don't think that's what we want. We didn't, you all didn't say two weeks ago, we're not going to ever do anything else besides these four things, right? You just said, these are the four things we want scoped. So, we still need to have a process to evaluate other requests, and we still need to have a process to deal with all the other stuff that got piled on from the previous council and the stuff that is lingering that we gave direction previously. We've got to be, we've got to go through the process of prioritizing all that, and we have to do it at goal-setting.
So, my understanding is we prioritized those four items two weeks ago, and then what I would think we would do next is we would look at the rest of the list and then give direction on what other items need to be scoped after we get through those four, because that's what we talked about two weeks ago.
And that's, the city council can make that decision. I mean, when you, when we all show up at that meeting on the second, you all can say, hey, we had this long conversation, we prioritize these four items. So, it seems like we've taken divergent paths. I apologize if my absence on the 22nd played a role in that, but for some time, we've been talking about, one of the objectives of goal-setting is both to identify the high-level goals and to go through all those referrals to create what's essentially a work plan of special projects for staff. So, that's been, we've been talking about that as our planning process for some time, and I'm sorry if that, there, a disconnect grew there.
If I may, I think I actually understood the direction to be the council majority who was here saying, move the four items forward as the number one, two, three, and four priorities. Now, that was the way I understood it. You said move the four, are obviously not all going to come at once, because that's piling too much into either, the first two wait for the other two to catch up, et cetera. That's not really what I understood you to mean. I was looking for, here is how much each one will take, and what, which ones do you want to see first? But I did understand from your previous vote that the council majority who was here that night voted that those would be your top four priorities off the list.
And voted, because I just want to clarify, because I wasn't here, voted to prioritize those four things over all the other things that we've previously given direction?
That was my.
Like the MRG implementation and the whistleblower policy and the review of boards and commissions and all the other things that we've put through the two-step process? Because if that's what this council decided, that's fine, then we should ax these right now and not pursue them, because if that's what I'm hearing, then we're doing nothing but those four things for the rest of the year.
I think the council members who voted on that would have to explain to you what they thought it was.
I'm just trying to clarify here.
No, I understand.
So, again, I'm going to say the same thing, and we should just take a vote. I mean, I don't want to keep wasting time around this. Honestly, we should just take a vote and call it a day. We were brought a list, that list was put on screen, we talked about it, and Vice Mayor Brigenter was chairing the meeting. We looked at all the items, and what we, what we ended up aligning around was, these are all public safety items, this is our number one priority, let's move these four items forward. And then we took a vote on that. Now, what the, what City Manager Murray's describing is something that I think we need to go through, right? Which is, let's sort of align, and this could be preparing, I don't know what plan you guys have, Mayor and you, City Manager Murray, but like, let's look at what it is that the team's going to accomplish ahead after you do these four items. You identify the priorities, and then you fit all of these different agenda items all under those priorities, and that gets you to the work plan. I don't think anyone here was saying, let's ax the rest of this list. It was more, we have 35 items, what should we prioritize from this? They put a screen, something on screen, and then we voted and kind of collated that list to something that seemed feasible, considering city staff had only gotten through four or five items in the past six months.
And I'll just say, so I'm going to, I put a motion on the table, I'm going to have us vote on it. I'll say that not all requests are equal. So, I think the council picked like four ordinances or that take months and months and months, when something like a Marina update you can do right now. So, I would just encourage us, again, I wasn't here and the city manager wasn't here, and that, you know, we're now having to figure out what happened, but, you know, not every, not every item's equal. So, not every item has, takes the same amount of sta, staff time, takes the same amount. And then, the list that was presented at the last meeting was just stuff that was at step one. It wasn't stuff that had already been at step two. I, I think we just, we made, the body made decisions from an incomplete list, and if the body wants to stick with that decision from an incomplete list and not go through the rest of the list, that's, that's a majority rule. I think, you know, per our discussion in February, this is something the city manager and I discussed, but that was, I think in February, we had a whole conversation about what we wanted to see in goal-setting, and part of it was, oh, that's when we're going to go through all the agenda items. So, I think that was our, that was our collective plan from, from the beginning.
And the city council, just to clarify, it wasn't the mayor and I, the whole city council had a conversation about what we were going to cover in goal-setting, and reviewing the, the referrals was one of those things. I mean, I guess an alternate approach would be to say, hey, the city council's already identified the top four, right? And the exercise at goal-setting is to pick, you know, prioritize from five on down through the rest of the list. If that seems to, if the intent of the council was to identify the top four priorities and you consider those to be set, that's fine, but then we still need to go through the prioritization process or just the, you know, deleting some of those that may not, no longer be of interest. So, maybe that's how we consider or view the process that happens at goal-setting.
That's fine, and in that case, my motion stands, which is just to move everything onto one list. So, I see Councilmembers Gordon, Lettigie, and Paul Mars, and then we should vote. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, sorry. What was presented to us is, that it is know that staff has overworked. And some of the things that we are asking on top of what has already been on their plate, didn't seem to be able to be reachable under the circumstances. And not saying our list would go away, because I had a whole lot on the list as well, but just like our own home, we create these goals, and then as we go along, we check them off. And we have three and a half years, in my particular case, to see those goals. And yes, we're going to have some items come on. It doesn't mean that we expect staff to ignore them. It just means that these are priorities, because what I'm seeing them doing, and this is my vision, how I'm doing it, is I'm doing a little something here, a little something here, a little something here, and then we come back and say, well, what about this? And what about that? And stop what you're doing and focus on this. And I find that to be not fair to staff, because if we really want real quality work, we have to let them complete something and so that we can check that off the list. And so, we did. We, we did do that, and we, we agreed to that. We do, you know, fortunate, both you were not here, but business as usual, it should not mean that our time would have been in vain by us not taking that matter that we took six hours to do. And so, what I'm saying is we should still stick to that idea, and yes, we could. And yes, we could add things along the way, it's, because they could finish that project faster now that we gave them correct, correct direction. And they can focus on it and they can get it done faster, instead of having them going all over the place and, and, and not getting anything done at all. Or not the way we would, they could do it if we let them stay focused on four items. And, and six months, you finish it, good, let's go to the following year, give another four, so forth. That's just my thinking of how that is, and I don't want to, that, that time to be in vain at all.
Councilmember Paul Maras.
Thank you. So I, I agree with the city manager. I, if you indulge me with this thought exercise. So the one through four, we all agree was a priority, right? Now, let's pretend we had a priority list or a quest list of a hundred other things, right? Now we're in the realm of ridiculousness, that's too many things to prioritize. If they were all priority, then nothing's going to get done, right? So a hundred is way too many. But adding five, adding the, the fifth thing to the list, the sixth thing to the list, the seventeenth to the list, and maybe some of those things are very easy things to get done. I'm pretty sure that staff could get one through four done relatively quickly, or at least within the, the realm of, you know, we want these back as soon as possible while still doing all the other ones. But if it gets to the point where, okay, these things are a slowing, could potentially slow down one through four, then that needs to be in the back burner while we do one through four. So I don't think it's a hard, well, do nothing else while one through four is getting done. I think there's probably, I don't know, I'm eyeballing here, but just maybe up to ten things we can do additionally that we feel are priority while we still do those one through four things. I, I mean, that, that's my assessment. I, I don't think it's one or the other. I, I feel like we can do, prioritize a few more things past those four.
So I'm gonna, I appreciate that. I, I'm, I'm going to vote on, the motion I made was, let's just move everything that's currently at step one to step two. I don't know, your light went off. Councilmember Ledesu.
So I, I just want to interject here, because I think, I think there's a lot of frustration, and here's the bottom line. The four were asked to be scoped, they're sitting in the city attorney's office. There are how many departments in the city? There are more than just one department with the multiple, multiple other requests that go throughout the entire city. They're not just in the city manager's office. So I think the priority that was made is sitting in the city manager's office to say, can you, I'm sorry, the city attorney's office, can you please scope these? What's going to, what's going to be the time so that we can make a decision about all the things that need to happen that's on this list? So we're not forgetting the list at all. The list still exists, because that list has been there since we got on this council and has not been attended to. Along with these things, we just need to know what are the resources? What departments are going to be doing these things so that we can understand? Okay, city manager and city attorney, how many things can we do in the next six months? That's what the scoping is all about, nothing more. And then we can talk about it once we understand what, how much time is it going to take? There's a Gantt chart, there's something that's telling me, this is how much manpower is required, here's the overlapping. Then we can decide that we can get ten things done, whatever those ten important things are. And so I think we need to be really cognizant of that and think about, that's the big picture of this process. This is why we spent the time to do this. And nothing is off the table at this moment in time. Everybody's stuff is still there.
All right, so with that in mind, let's, let's vote on, we'll move everything to step two. We'll have a list on September 2nd with whatever the point, you know, point department is. And that way we can at least, you know, do some additional prioritization beyond the, beyond the four. And let's vote on that and folks can vote however they want. Okay.
Any clarification?
Yes.
So I'm confused. So we voted already for the four items for staff to take, because like it was pointed out, it does go through more than one department. And some can get it through faster, some may need more time. So what are we voting on today that was not part of our plan?
The problem is that the list that you all had two weeks ago was incomplete. There was a lot of stuff that has been requested by council that wasn't on that list, that needs to be determined whether or not it's stuff we want to proceed with. And then there's new stuff that's come in, there's two new requests that have come in, the activation plan and the ED thing that we need to get from step one into step two. And we need to get everything onto one list so we can cut the confusion going forward when we're deciding what we want to agendize. It's not changing the four things from before, we're just putting everything on one list.
So Dawn, is that correct with the mayor saying that we did not, that you withheld some stuff?
It's not withheld, it's things were at different steps of, it, things were at different steps of the process, so there wasn't one list. Is that accurate, Dawn?
What was presented last meeting was only the request this council has made from January to July 22nd. There were a few things that Councilmember Ledesu and Councilmember Gordon identified that weren't correct and they have since been corrected. But was, what was not brought before you was the request, all those thirty-something requests from the prior council. And that's what City Manager Murray is saying, that will come back to, everything will come back to you at goal-setting for you to discuss.
But clarifying, you are saying though, everything that we, we asked since we sat down, minus a couple of things that you corrected, they were on that list?
As far as I know, and again, we, I requested counsel, if you think there was something not on that PowerPoint that we went through or in the, the spreadsheet that was attached to staff report, please let me know and I'll go back and research it.
And was our mayor connected to that email?
I'm sorry?
Was the mayor connected to that email as well? Because you said you sent it to us, I do see us all on there, but I'm just asking, was there a chance for the mayor to, to revisit that? Just clarifying, if there was something she saw missing that she could have added?
The mayor's what, yeah, it was in the staff report and it was, so I guess, what, what I, what was presented last week, there were twelve items that had not gone beyond just the initial ask. And that's what the council discussed and took the four out, out of those twelve related to public safety, directed staff to come back and scope those. At the same time you made that direction and motion, you said, bring the rest of those items back so you could take a look at them, see if you could prioritize some more.
And that's what, that's what I'm trying to do, is get everything back onto one list so we can prioritize some more. And I, I just want us to vote on it at this point unless there's clarifying questions, because I think we're spinning.
I'm still, yeah, I'm confused.
It's a clarifying statement more than anything else. The list of, what'd you say, twelve, aren't all at the same stage. And so I think as, that's the problem. And so there is where the confusion lies. Maybe they came up as a council member comment, didn't get moved to state step one. And remember, the old process was step one, step two, step three, essentially. I, I think therein lies the problem. Council at your last meeting took an item that was pre-step one and moved it to step two. The other items that are on that list don't necessarily, aren't necessarily even at step one yet. They were initial asks that you haven't voted to move on. And so the confusion lies in whether you want to jump all of those over a step or whether you don't want to jump over all of those over a step. I can't speak to what you want to do, I can just say that's what I believe is creating some of the confusion.
I'm going to clarify the motion. So the motion is to take everything that's currently at step one, Councilmember Paul Maras and Matias's activation plan, Councilmember Gordon's business campaign and everything else that was on that list last time, and move all of that to step two so we can deal with it. And everything that all else that was at step two from this council and everything else that was at step two from the previous council, and get everything on step two so we're not having to do the same thing that the folks struggled with last time, because you had this multi-step incomplete list with stuff at different phases. I'm saying, let's push it all to one phase. I want to just vote on that motion. Again, folks will vote however they want, that's my motion. Let's, let's vote, let's vote on it. Councilmember Paul Maras.
Sorry. Just so we're all on the same page, because I feel like we're, some of us are using different terms. So when I think of these steps, right, that my requests, for example, that's like step zero. It's like a pre-step one, right? It's not even a step. I don't like that, but that's how I've just been thinking about it since you made that memo before. So, so we're actually moving these things that were a step zero to step one. Are, are we in agreement on that or, or, go ahead, Mayor?
Everything that was on the list last time was at step one. These two things, we've just changed the process. So these two things are in a different process that just came. I'm just trying to put it all in one list. So if we can just vote on that, if you, folks don't want to do that, that's fine, you're welcome to propose something else. I want to get us out of here and I just want us to be able on the second to go through the list and decide what we're going to do, without having to worry about, well, no, this one didn't go through this step or this one's at zero and this one's at one and this one's at two. Let's just put it all at the same step. That's what I'm trying to do.
And you'll have scopes for all of them, so you know what the level of effort is for them.
Ironically, we've spent a very long time on this. What I'm trying to do is save us a boatload of time by doing this. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Ledesu. And then we're, and then we just, we have to vote, we can't.
Problem with this whole thing is you can't say, was it at this step or that step? Some of the things on that list had never, ever even been brought onto an agenda and has been waiting to be agendized. So that's number one issue. And that's why we had this long discussion about step one, step two, does this process really work? Because there have been things that have been here for months that have never been brought forward. So that is really, let's clean the slate and talk about what the real issue is here. And you weren't, you were online and then you left. So that is really the issue. And I don't appreciate, oh, we're moving it all. No, because half of this stuff wasn't ever considered to be brought forward. And that has been really the issue with council is, where are the things that we have been requesting? What is the list? No one knows what the secrets are as it relates to what the list is, how it gets to the agenda and keeps moving on. So the real question here is, there are many things on that list that have never been brought forward to this council on the agenda to even be considered as one or, or two. So the real question becomes then, is whatever is on the list, when we go to agendas, or go to goal-setting, then we can talk about it. We don't have to worry about if it's a step zero, one, or two, or three. Because I don't appreciate this conversation after all of the other things that we've been talking about on the last meeting. Because this is why we were having the question about, how are we really going to activate using this two-step process? And if it's not going to be done appropriately, then we don't need it. And we can just do what, what is in the, in our bylaws to say, oh, yeah, I can add something if I want to. So we needed to figure out, is this really going to work? And this is why we've had this long discussion. So I'll leave it like that.
I do have a quick question, through the chair, Mayor.
We, go ahead, we've got a, we, we really do need to vote.
No worries. Through, through the, is it even in point of order? Because in number twelve, all we were supposed to be doing is making requests and action for future agendas or special projects. That's all we were supposed to be doing. That others, this, all this whole conversation really is not even in order, because it wasn't something that required us to vote on anything. All we were doing is putting in the request and then if we wanted to have it vote on tonight, then that's what we do. If we, if you voted no against it, you voted no against it. Am I wrong for thinking that, City Attorney? Am I wrong in that thinking of this, what this twelve was supposed to be about?
So as I understood twelve, and maybe I don't even understand it, but I think I do, twelve was the new process that the council voted to essentially try to take the initial request and step one and combine them together. So it would be a vote to move this item, right? On these items forward. I think the mayor's issue is, it feels like because the new process has less steps than it, than the old process, that new items are now jumping over older items. And I think that's the issue that she's trying to raise in, in asking this question. Am I wrong?
No, that's, that's correct. Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to streamline things. But honestly, we've already had, we've had two members that just got up and left in the middle of a vote. So I, I'm tempted to just adjourn the meeting, honestly, at this point. I think we're just done with this. So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the city manager go and then I'm going to adjourn. I'll withdraw my motion.
Those members might have voted, so there might be an active vote underway. I think, I think getting all of...
We have a quorum.
I think getting all of those requests to the same stage better positions us to have a conversation at the meeting. Otherwise, we're going to be having a goal-setting meeting where we haven't even scoped some of the requests. So you're not going to have complete information about the resources that would be required. So that's my thought. And I think there's a motion on the table and voting is underway.
Yeah, and if people have voted, let's vote, and then I'm going to adjourn.
Has everyone here but voted? I have, I'm showing five. Okay, there we go. So the motion carries with Councilmember Gordon and Matias opposed.
All right, I'm gonna, I, we've had council members walk out, so I'm going to adjourn us at 12:33 and we'll just skip the council member updates. I'm gonna, I'm gonna adjourn.
We have a quorum still. We have to finish our agenda.